Hi, good evening, everyone, and welcome all of you to our special Board of Education meeting for June 8th, 2020. Can I have a motion to open the meeting at 6:32 PM?
I moved open the meeting.
May I have a second?
One second.
Thanks, Holly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can we all now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Holly McCall?
I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, justiciable, justice for all.
I like when the kids do it.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. We are going to start tonight's meeting with our superintendent's report.
So I just express my gratitude for holding a meeting tonight. I want to begin by saying where I am to our students and to our community. I am responsible for the climate and the tone at which this district approaches acceptance and tolerance. And I am mortified by the video and the subsequent stories that have been shared with me by our alumni and our current students of feeling marginalized and not accepted for who they are as people in our school community. And it's absolutely unacceptable. Tonight, I want to talk about the video and what happened around that in a way that protects privacy rights, but also provides, I think, clarifying information based on the communications that I've received about that particular horrific event that took place in our school. I want to share a little bit with you about our thinking that was happening before any of this happened, about how we were approaching social justice education in our school community. I want to take a moment to talk about a pathway forward and then provide an opportunity to really listen tonight to our community, share their views and their suggestions on how to make us better. So I'd like to begin by just sharing some facts around the video that was sent to the district on Friday morning. So in February, an anonymous alert notified the high school administration that a video existed of students saying the N-word that was taken in our cafeteria. We requested the video through the anonymous alert system, but did not receive it from the person who submitted the report. No students came forward and reported the video. The incident was investigated. Students took responsibility for their behavior and were held accountable. During the investigation, the video was requested, but we did not receive it. It was reported to have been deleted. Just for clarifying information, a building principal in dealing with disciplinary matters at his or her level cannot subpoena evidence during an investigation. Early last week, a TikTok video was posted by a student who made statements about burning down the student's home in the video from February and asked people to private message them for more information. This was reported to school administration, and it was addressed. On Friday, the February video taken in our cafeteria was sent to the school district administration for the first time. The video was sent to the police by me on Friday to determine if a crime had been committed, and it had not. Since the students have already been held accountable for their behavior, they cannot be disciplined again. There have been commissioner decisions that speak to this issue that are very clear. The district cannot and will not share the consequences or interventions the students received who were involved in the February video incident, or for the student who made the online video last week. Our children have privacy rights, and we will not violate their rights. The district has been sent new social media posts over the weekend of our students that are disturbing. Our high school administrative team will address them, but again, we cannot and will not comment on the actions we take. Children have privacy rights that must be adhered to. The school did not send out a notice to families about the video in February because the students were held accountable for their behavior. And since I've been here, we've sent out notifications to families when we had incidents occur where we did not know who did it. For example, and the most common example is heat speech is written on the wall in a bathroom. In those incidents, we have a very clear protocol. We call the police, we call the ACLU, we notify the faculty, we notify the parents, we address the students, and we conduct an investigation. We have not contacted the community when students have been held accountable for behaviors that are intolerant and unacceptable. And these behaviors have occurred at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. I also want to clear up some misinformation about discipline. When a student is suspended from school, it is noticed on their attendance record and in their discipline file. It is not placed on their high school transcript. The high school transcript is what our districts send to our colleges. It is the student's responsibility to report if they are suspended from school during the college application process if that information is requested. The school district does not share this information. The only time a student's attendance or discipline record is reviewed by an outside agency is if a release is signed by the student, and usually that happens if they're going for a high-level job with security and clearance, or if it is required to be released under I think it's important for me to share with you that we have had incidents at every level this year that were inappropriate, hurtful, and discriminatory in nature, elementary, middle, and high school. Each time an incident occurs, I am aware of this, and we discuss it at the district level. In each circumstance, the students were addressed, the parents were notified, and the students were disciplined based on the nature of the incident and their age. I am responsible for the district's approach. It's me. And I acknowledge there have been too many incidents since I've been here in our district, across our schools. I acknowledge this, and we have been talking about this as a team since early last year. And while we have been taking steps to address these concerns, I would share that they are not enough, nor have we moved quick enough, and that is my responsibility. In January, we created a fellowship that is made up of our K-12 faculty that will be chaired by Dr. Sinanis, an equity fellowship, to analyze our incidents, our curriculum, and our social justice approach. The faculty have been selected through an application process, and the work was set to begin this spring, but due to the coronavirus, we have pushed that off until the summer. We have begun the process of diversifying our elementary libraries and embedding anchored texts in our curriculum that are reflective of our larger community. But this is certainly not enough, nor does it address the lack of exposure or explicit social justice instruction that our students are sharing with me is lacking at the secondary level. We have some significant curricular shifts that need to happen, and I know administrators and our faculty are ready to do this work, and the equity fellowship is where this work will begin. This past spring, we committed to hiring qualified staff that would diversify our faculty. We believe in this. We know it is important. We knew it was important before this movement, and we've been able to present to Board of Education a more diverse slate of candidates this spring. We will continue to seek out strong, qualified, diverse candidates for our faculty and administrative positions. I hear calls very clearly to revise our code of conduct from our students and our community. The code of conduct must be revised and approved each year before school starts so we can begin this process immediately and have new language ready for September. In the next few days, we will be running focus groups with our high school students and our staff to process this incident and to gather their direct feedback. We will continue to run professional development sessions for our faculty and our administrators, which we shared with the community on Saturday morning, to help our students process what's happening in the environment around us, to share resources that we can use during our virtual learning to support this work. This video is not who we are. It is how we respond to this that defines us. We have to decide if we are going to tear each other down, or if we're going to pull together as a community and work together for our students. Our team, our teachers, our administrators are ready to do the necessary social justice work with our students, but we can only begin to engage in this important work at the speed at which it deserves if we are supported by our community. And I want to thank Ivy Poole, who's with us tonight, supervisor, with us in this important I am here to listen tonight to our community. I've already received some powerful suggestions on how to move forward. My entire team is listening. And at our next board meeting, I will be ready to present a clear and concise pathway forward for the board's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. On behalf of the board, I want to thank you all for being here tonight, everyone who's here, everyone who wants to speak to us, everyone who has sent us many, many letters, and we appreciate your patience as we get through all of them, because we want to read them, and we want to hear, and we want to listen. Thank you, Christine, for your directness. I would like to say, at least on behalf of myself, I know the place that you are coming from. I know it's a good place, and I would say that for all of the administrators on the Zoom now, and Andrew Corselia as well, and our district as a whole. I know they are coming from a good place and want to do the work. I would like to give all the board members an opportunity to speak tonight. I will start off and allow my fellow trustees to make some comments as well. I wanted to start by saying that the message that the board sent out to the community on Saturday was heartfelt, and it is only the beginning of our commitment to do better and to make change. I am angry, I am outraged, and I am heartbroken by the deaths of George Floyd, and Ahmaud Aubrey, and Breonna Taylor, and countless other people of color who deserve justice and deserve better than what they have been getting for hundreds and hundreds of years. The systemic racism that exists in our community, and unfortunately, every community around the country, is disgusting and disgraceful, and we need to be allies in speaking out and taking action. Many of you have spoken up, and you should continue to speak up and demand that we listen. Those of us who have benefited from white privilege need to commit to allyship and to using our collective hearts and minds to come up with meaningful actions and solutions. We need those solutions to be grounded in love and tolerance, not hatred. Bullying and threatening the physical and mental health of minor children is not a solution, and it is beneath all of us. The responsibility of all of us as board members, administrators, and parents is to educate our children, to let them know that racism and discrimination will not be tolerated in our schools and our homes, to actively promote an anti-racist stance, and to hold ourselves accountable to make change. Last night, during this community's very moving and enlightening, and I hope healing, interfaith vigil, Reverend Martha Jacobs noted that as we try to make these changes, we are all going to make mistakes. I know I will make mistakes, but I invite you to call me out on them, to give me suggestions on how to correct them, to give me facts and information that I need to make good decisions, and to work with me so that together we can make change that is meaningful and saves lives. Thank you all for being here with us tonight, and I will now hand off to Holly McCall, our vice president.
Thank you, Jane. That was well said, and Christine, I can hear how much this matters to you in your voice, and I thank you for being open and vulnerable in this time. So I'm just going to add a few things from my perspective. Since Friday, I have read literally hundreds of emails from students, alumni, and concerned community members. And just like everyone who wrote, "I'm alarmed and offended by the insensitive, racist, and hurtful behavior depicted in the video." Across our country and right here in Japua, we've reached an inflection point, or so I hope. And I believe that education, open discussion of race, social justice, and modeling acceptance is going to be central to our ability to achieve a meaningful change. It can be easy, and I'm guilty of it, to think that things like this don't happen here. Clearly and undeniably, it does. So the question is, what do we do now? We're at the beginning of a journey that we're all going to take as individuals, as a school district, and as a community. And a lot of this has already started, but I'm going to articulate my call to the administration to accelerate efforts that are already underway, to examine and improve our curriculum as it relates to racism, antisemitism, and prejudice in history, to seek ways to diversify our faculty and staff, and continually seek ways to further and promote anti-racist education, thinking, culture, and behavior here. As a school board, we must hold ourselves accountable for leading this change, with Christine, to listen and to share updates with our community. I call on us together as a board and administration to review that code of conduct and discipline policy with an eye to this type of behavior and the consequences associated with it. And finally, I call on our community, and so many of you are here and attended the vigil last night, it's clear that it's important, but we need to continue to come together. You need to continue to speak your concerns, talk with your children. I know I've had a lot of hard conversations with mine in the last few days. And hold us accountable for our commitment to this change. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Holly. Hillary Grasso, if you want to say anything.
Tonight, more so than any other night so far these months, I wish we could be together in person. I also wonder, though, if some of what has been said over the past few days would have in person been said differently. What happened in this district was horrible. There's no two ways around that. And now it's time to learn from it and grow and get better. We need to do the work to be better. Dr. Ackerman has explained what happened, why the response was what it was, and why it's not going to be revisited. So how can we do better going forward? Much of the conversation over the past few days that we've read and seen has centered around the punishment and the adequacy thereof. And punishment is easy, and it feels good to cast the blame and say that those who did wrong should be punished harshly, because then we know that the wrongdoers are someone else and that their work is done. But our work as a district and as a community is not done simply by meeting out a punishment, whatever that punishment is, and it's not the meaningful work. In a previous job, I handled a lot of discipline hearings, and I sought and won the long-term suspensions of many kids. And it never felt good, and it was never the meaningful work. So what is the meaningful work? A lot has been made in the past weeks in the wake of recent senseless murders of being an ally to people of color. But there's more to being an ally than posting on Facebook and going to rallies. And those things are important, and I don't want to detract from them, but the work of being an ally is harder than that. It's speaking up when it's uncomfortable. It's hard, and it often doesn't feel good. And I think that sometimes we need to reframe, and instead of thinking, "My neighbor's kid posted something or did something awful, but I don't want to get them in trouble and cause my neighbor a lot of pain," none of which is invalid. We need to think, "My neighbor's kid posted something awful, and I want to try to spare harm to my other neighbor's child who will be harmed by this, and spare my other neighbor the pain of having to help her child through this." And it's also, I want to help these kids who did unequivocally a bad thing learn and grow while they're still in the relatively safe space of high school, or middle school, or unfortunately, even elementary school, versus this being sent to her boss because she never learned. This is also true of our kids. We need to teach them to speak up, that it's okay to speak up even when it's hard, and we need to model that for them. None of this is to say that we shouldn't take a hard look at our discipline policy. We should, and it's something that merits revisiting periodically, even without crises that we're facing. But we should look at it critically to make sure it's accomplishing what we want it to, teaching what we want it to, because we need to also remember that we are a school district, and our job is to educate. And that goes beyond math and spelling and all of the things we often talk about in this space. Our job is to teach our children how to be contributing members of society, how to be good adults. It's also to help them when they mess up, when they make mistakes, when they do bad things, even when they do bad things when they should have known better. Should there be consequences? Of course, but they should be meaningful consequences that help them learn from what they did wrong and do better. We need to have a growth mindset in this arena, too. And this is hard work. In the past week or so, I've started having hard conversations with my daughter, conversations that I honestly should have started having long ago. And it took me the events of the past few weeks to realize that my not having these conversations is in itself an expression of privilege. It's a privilege to not have to have these conversations with young children. It's still hard to have these conversations, but my family is doing the work. Over the coming weeks and months, we're all going to have to look in the mirror of part of doing this work. And this isn't one of those department store mirrors with the nice lighting. This is a mirror that shows that we can and must do better. So here we are as a board, ready and committed to doing the work, and we are ready to listen. And that includes to the students. We are your Board of Education, and we are here to talk to you and listen to you, too, not just the adults. We will work with the administration, the students, the parents, the faculty, and our whole community to do the work and to get better. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Hillary. Warren, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I only have a couple of comments. One, I'm very sorry that we're here as a community when we gathered, but we have to be here for this discussion. I'm sorry that we're all hurting, especially the groups that have been targeted, especially those groups. We need to have frank discussions about race. We need to eliminate all intolerances of race, gender, et cetera, in our community. We need to be reflective. We need to focus and prioritize the values that we hold dearly as a community, and then share and teach them to all members of our community, or youngsters, as well as the adults of our community. We all moved here. We have a wonderful community. We can do better. Working together, we will do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. And Vicky?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, everybody. So we're seeing a groundswell of support for the Black Lives Matter movement and the brutality faced by African-Americans and people of color. I've been reflecting on our experiences, on my experiences, too, as a person of color in this community, our individual and collective experiences in dealing not just with overt racism and what we've seen in the videos, but all different kinds and more frequent subtle microaggressions. As to the overt racism, the videos are sickening. We know that. I personally have felt sickened psychologically and physically. I haven't stopped thinking about it since I've seen them. I've been told stories of students of color having experienced more of this. I'm appalled, I'm disgusted, and I'm exhausted by the continuing ignorance and cruelty. When I was younger, I thought that by now, these things would have changed. I am hearing from our administration, and Christine has said today that the videos weren't shared with the building principal. I understand how difficult it is to put yourself out there and how hard it is to tell a story to tell on people. But this simple fact that the videos weren't shared until last Friday illustrates how fighting racism is a collective responsibility. Dr. Christine Ackerman took a powerful stance from the heart at yesterday's interfaith vigil, and again today, she's taken full responsibility. But the truth is, the school district can't do this alone. We need all of you. We're talking about the video and overt racism, but I'm going to talk a little bit about the more frequent subtle racism and microaggressions that people of color face. As people of color, we've learned to adapt to uncomfortable situations and to pick our battles. We deal with casual racism, throwaway statements, insensitive questions and comments. Sometimes even people of privilege blame us for racism, hard as that is to believe. They ask why we didn't do more to stop it, turning the blame on us instead of themselves or people who look like them. We choose between constantly educating people or overlooking incidents. We accommodate. We think they didn't really mean it. They didn't understand what they were saying. They're a good person. They're a friend. We don't want to make others uncomfortable, and instead, we hold the discomfort within our own minds and our bodies. We bear the burden of understanding. So people want to change. Let's give them the space to do it, the opportunities to ask questions, the freedom to make mistakes. Let's de-stigmatize the word racist so that we can explain what attitudes, words, actions, and assumptions are racist as a way to educate without attacking. I will categorically state, based on the incidents we have witnessed, the school district has not done enough in teaching racism. We do not adequately teach African-American history and the way systemic racism has had and continues to have an impact on African-Americans and people of color. We commit to do better. We will continue to accept feedback. We will listen. We will establish a system of accountability and provide updates to you on the steps we are taking. I want to talk about four concrete steps that I can think of today. At the last meeting, I've already asked for revisions to the curriculum. At the meeting of June 3rd, I referred, for instance, to the 1921 Tulsa Race Massacre as an example, and looking to update the curriculum regarding the history of African-Americans and people of color, and looking at ways in which systemic racism continues to drive inequity and injustice in our society, looking at the impact of institutional racism in the present. The board will introduce a formal resolution on addressing these issues in our curriculum at our next scheduled board meeting. Secondly, I've suggested, and I'm suggesting today, creating a board advisory committee on racism and race relations. We can think of the name later, but the purpose would be to listen and learn, to begin a formal process of healing and reconciliation within our school district, and make recommendations to the board for action and implementations in this regard. Number three, it's been touched upon, I want to suggest revisions to our code of conduct, which delineates infractions and punishments. Yes, the punishment should have been more severe, might have been more severe had the video been shared, but had the punishment been more severe, had there been more days of suspension, do we think this would have brought about any change? I would like to see the introduction of restorative justice in the code of conduct. It's about repairing harm and rebuilding relationships, bringing students together to acknowledge what has occurred and the consequences and reverberation of racist remarks and actions. It's about truth, recognition, validation, reflection, understanding, and making amends and learning. We can add community service as a component. The real goal is an authentic learning experience and reconciliation to bring people together and fostering healthy relationships. Finally, we've received, I must say, over 300 emails. Thank you for all the time you took to write to us, for caring and acting upon these issues in the best way that you can as of now. The board has issued a statement, which is on our website, in response. Our usual protocol is that the board president answers all letters and emails, but we've had so many, we agreed to put our answer on the website and to send to our community. And we're hopeful that everyone will accept this message. However, as the only person of color on this board, I feel the pain and anguish as the only person of color on this board, I feel the pain and anguish of the students and alumni of color who wrote to us about their personal experiences. I want to send a reply to them as an individual board member because they are personally affected. I hope the Board can accept that exception to our protocol in this particular instance. Although we are navigating a time of unrest and turbulence in our district, I want this to be a time to make connections and support one another. A time of transformation and evolution. Mostly a time of hope. So in the very immediate future for us on the Board, it's a time to listen. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vicky, and thank everyone for their very heartfelt and thoughtful and meaningful comments. We now are at the public comment portion of our evening. I know some of you have heard this many times before, but for the benefit of those of you attending tonight who have never attended any of our meetings, either in person or over Zoom, and are not familiar with our procedures, I want to take a minute to go over how our public comment period works so it can run smoothly and we can listen to you. I know some of you may assume that public comment is a question and answer period, but it is not. It is an opportunity for you to make a public statement to the Board up to three minutes in length. Now, our Board meetings are strictly regulated under New York State law. And they are not, as some of you might understandably think, a town hall type forum where the public can come for a back and forth dialogue. Our Board meetings are for the Board to conduct its business, but under New York State law, our business meetings are required to be held in public. Boards of education in New York are not required to have a public comment period at our meetings, but we have always chosen to do that in Chappaqua because we do very much want to hear what our community members have to say. We want your ideas and we want your input. We also make ourselves available for more of a back and forth dialogue, and you can email or call us individually to do that. But in terms of public comment at our meetings, in order to give everyone the same opportunity to speak and be heard, these are our procedures which we follow at every meeting. And I will go over the accommodations that we have had to make now that we have had to go onto Zoom during the pandemic. All comments are limited to three minutes. Our clerk, Lisa Elsner, will keep time as she always does. We will not be granting extensions of time, and that has been our policy at all of our previous Zoom, Zoom meetings. Tonight, to assist people, Lisa will hold up a sign indicating when you have 30 seconds left and will state when your time is up as well. As we have been doing during our Zoom meetings from the beginning, anyone wishing to comment must electronically raise their hand. You are all in a Zoom attendees, so you need to raise your hand. We can see the order of the hands raised, and we will, one by one, move that person over from an attendee to a panelist. Your name will be called out when it's time for you to speak, and you will be moved over to panelist status. Please state your first and last name, as well as your address or connection to the community before you begin speaking. We also require and we must have both video and audio um, for a speaker to, for them to be able to comment. If there is a problem and we cannot both see and hear you, we will take the next person in line to comment, and you can raise your hand again, and we will bring you back in and give it one more try, which we have done previously. If it does not work, then we apologize. We're sorry that there are sometimes technical difficulties, but then we would ask you to please submit your comment to us via email. We also do not allow the use of personally identifiable information, including names of students or employees when addressing any incidents or concerns. That has never been allowed at any of our meetings. Please know that we do very much want to hear what you have to say. And we do not want to have to mute a speaker who goes over the time limit or uses personally identifiable information. So we're asking for everyone to please respect our policies and procedures, which are for everyone's benefit, so that everyone is treated fairly. And as is our standard policy and is unstated on this in every agenda, at the end of the entire public comment period, the Board members may choose to have a discussion among themselves regarding comments presented. So thank you all for listening. Um, we just felt it was important. We appreciate all the new members to our meeting tonight, and we wanted to make sure that everyone understood our procedures as best as possible. Um, I can look over at the attendees now, and I will ask our technical support here to move over the first person with their hand up. That is Phoebe. That is how it is reading, Phoebe, and we'll see if Phoebe can get moved over. Okay. Okay, Phoebe, I see that you've popped in. We need your video and your audio. Okay, Phoebe, if you could maybe try and unmute yourself and get your audio started. Let's see if we can do that. And if not, well, we will try and swing back and get you back on here. Okay. I'm so sorry. I think we have to move on to the next person. That would be Divya Agarwal. Thank you all for being patient as we try and make this work for everyone.
Hi.
Hi, Divya. Thank you so much. Okay, you can, um, can you just state your name so we have it for the record and, and your connection to the community?
Yeah. Yes, my name is Divya Agarwal. Um, I attended Greeley, grew up in Chappaqua. Um, and I graduated in 2008. My parents still live there. My sister and brother-in-law live there. They have two kids in the school district. Um, and I love Chappaqua. And so, you know, when these videos surface, it's, it's heartbreaking. It's really, it's absolutely heartbreaking, and I don't want to ruin anyone's life. Um, I don't think that's what this is about. Uh, I think this is about the role that our schools play in shaping our lives. You know, I'm 12 years out of school, and I still think about my high school experience. And one thing that, um, you know, generally I agree with all of your comments, but one thing that really rubbed me the wrong way was the number of times I heard, "But they're just kids." Um, the consequences of these kids' actions, whether they are 13 or 16 or six, do have a big impact on other people's lives. I'll never forget that time when I was on the playground when I was six, and someone told me, they asked me where my family was from, and then said, "I'm glad that my family's not from there," because then my skin would be dark like yours. And I was six. That was, you know, 24 years ago, and that still sticks with me. And the racism that I experienced is a fraction of what my black peers experienced. Um, kids get protected. Privileged kids get even more protected. And this needs to go beyond changing a code of conduct. No one knows about the code of conduct when you go to school. It's just used in disciplinary action, and this is really about the actual programming of the school. Um, you know, Holly said this really well. Chappaqua is a place of privilege, but racism still exists, and we can't hide behind this liberal town label. Um, alums of Greeley go on to do amazing work. They are in positions of power, and I think it's the responsibility of the school to ensure that, um, you're really helping raise good kids. So thank you for holding this time, um, and I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your comments. We really appreciate them.
Thanks.
Okay, we will move Divya out, and we will move in Alyssa Ashley, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, and we can see you. Thank you, Alyssa. If you could just state your full name and your connection to Chappaqua, that would be great.
Great. My name's Alyssa Ashley, and I graduated the class of 2014. Um, I was called the N-word in the cafeteria when I went to Horace Greeley. I encountered racism by teachers and peers ever since I was at Roaring Brook. From this call, I'm hearing that you as a board are appalled to hear that more and more students are talking and sharing about their experiences. And that's because punishment has never been shown at Greeley in these situations, and they're often wiped under the rug. Punishment shows an example that these acts will no longer be tolerated. People speak up if they know that a proper punishment will be given and that the whistleblower will not get in trouble. In my opinion, the whistleblower in this situation should not even have been mentioned in this conversation. The person who brought this video to light should not be a distraction. Yes, her words were used improperly. That also came from passion for showing that she does not stand or he does not stand for racism. As a school district, you need to take accountability. If these students aren't being taught properly at home, you need to teach them properly at school. You need to show them punishment. You need to teach them that the consequence of their actions and punishment is needed. I'm scared by this video. I'm a black person who, if I were stuck in the room with these students, I would be scared for my life. These students have exemplified the same mind frame of the killer of George Floyd, that black people are lesser, and that they can be caught on video, and no consequence will be provided.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us, Alyssa.
Thank you.
Okay, um, if we could bring Stefan in, that is the next person with a hand up.
Hello.
Hi, Stefan. If you could give your full name for us, please, and your connection to Chappaqua, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stefan Prizny, and I graduated from Horace Greeley High School in 2007. Just a few days ago, I was browsing Reddit, a social media site, when I was surprised to see the name of my hometown in Alma mater popping up for one of the worst reasons imaginable. Multiple students were seen exhibiting racist behavior on school grounds on camera, and what's worse is they did it with smiles on their faces. I was enraged and incensed, and this outrage was only fueled by the revelation that these students had received nothing but a slap on the wrist, with parents and school administration doing what they do best around here in Chappaqua, saving face and pretending that nothing was amiss. Initially, I wanted harsher punishment, but with time to reflect, I believe that this is not the correct course of action. Children make mistakes, sometimes really bad mistakes, like the one in the video we have all undoubtedly seen by now. That happens. Mistakes happen. Anybody who knows me knows that I made my fair share of them when I was younger. What I take the gravest issue with was how, is with how this inflammatory racial incident was brushed under the rug by parents rather than addressing it when racism reared its ugly head in our community. That this is being done not by the kids, but by the adults is what saddens me the most. We are at a defining moment in our country and in our community. Simply saying students were held responsible and accountable, when in fact, all they were given was a one or two day suspension is a testament to how seriously this administration, this, I can't even speak, I'm so worked up. It is a testament to how seriously this administration takes racism, not seriously at all. That's the kind of suspension that a student would get for vaping in the bathroom. And if those two offenses are comparable, then my name is Karen. If nothing else changes from this incident, I would ask that the Chappaqua Central School District policy be changed to require racially related suspensions be reflected on students' transcripts. I fear that this, that then and only then will some parents take racism in their homes and in our schools seriously. And I'd like to close with, uh, in a, in a comment that I will not attribute to anyone, so it's not to violate the, the rules and regulations as they've been stated here. But this is a comment from a, a parent in our community who is, who has, I guess that's all I'll say about them, and the comment is this. Just saying, "I did not teach my children that word. Black rappers did. Black people did. Our white children don't hear that word in our homes. They hear it from black people. If it's so taboo, nobody should be saying it." And the reason I've shared that comment is because I feel that unfortunately, that is the kind of sentiment that all too many parents in our community hold. And it's up to the, the administration and, and the community to hold them accountable, in a sense that I feel like we're not even a shred of anywhere near as close as we need to be in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Stefan. Thank you very much. Um, Madison Thantoo? Hi, Madison. We can, we don't have your video or audio yet, so I'm hoping you can turn that on.
Hi.
Hi, Madison. If you could just state your name and your connection to the school district. Thank you so much.
Yes, my name is Madison Thantoo. I graduated from Horace Greeley in, with the class of 2017. I just wanted to first start off by what Hillary Grasso said. And she made a comment, "This isn't one of those department store mirrors with nice lighting." She stated that right after mentioning white privilege. I'm sorry, you're going to make a reference to the beautiful mirrors in a department store and then like talk about white privilege? That is the definition of white privilege. This, I, building off of every single other statement that has come before me, this is exactly what Chappaqua does best. They cover things up because all they care about is their reputation. The same thing that happened with Mr. Schroffnagle. The Board of Education, Education, Christina Ackerman covered up what happened and also victim blamed survivors of sexual assaults. This is what Chappaqua does best. And I cannot understand why people keep living in this town, keep spending such a absurd amounts of money on these tax dollars when you are not providing a good form of education. All you care about is protecting your reputation. I personally am so that I went to Horace Greeley, that I went through the Chappaqua School District because I do not identify with how you guys treat survivors of sexual assault, how you experience this culture that you are fostering. And you do not care about changing the culture. All you care about is hiding it. I, I am a person of color, but I am not African American. I am not black, so I cannot relate to the experiences that other people have spoken about, what these people, what these persons of racist bullying have experienced. But I know other freshmen, I know other people who are in Greeley right now, who are called chink, who are called other racist words like that. And you guys hide it. You, all you care about is hiding it. And I know one of the people, and I'm not going to name the name because I know you'll mute me. I know that one of the people who was in that video has had one, at least one, probably more incidences of being a bully. And you're, you're not, you're not serving punishment. Yeah, I see that. You're not serving punishment. You, you do not care about the well-being and about the experiences of your students. You do not care about the education system you're providing. All you care about is your tax dollars.
Thank you, Madison. We appreciate your input. Angela Bronerheim?
Hi. Bronerhelm.
Okay, I'm sorry. I could not see whether that was an I or an L. Thank you so much. So state your full name and your connection to the community. Thank you so much.
My name's Angela Bronerhelm, and I am a parent of a black child in the Chappaqua School District. Um, my husband Kyle is here, and I'm, I don't know if we can both speak because we each have something different to say. But, um, you know, when I heard about this, to say I was disheartened is an understatement. I was gutted. It's appalling that in the year 2020, that kids would think such a vile word is a joke. And it shows that we have a really long way to go, especially when the rest of the country is finally starting to recognize that black lives matter. The fact that this school district is probably 90 to 95% white is not lost on me. The reason why we're in this school district, even though we have to subject our child to being the only one, was definitely an issue, one many here don't understand. Or they don't have to deal with it. That is, to get a decent education in the United States, a black child usually has to pay or be in a community where they are the only one or a significant minority. And all of the social and psychological trauma, yes, trauma, that goes along with that. My husband Kyle grew up here. He went to Roaring Brook. He went to Bell. He graduated from Greeley in the year 1987. And he dealt with it, as did his siblings, who all coincidentally went to historically black colleges and universities. Um, the wealth, the privilege, the homogeneity of Chappaqua schools is something we grappled with as parents of a black child. Um, but in the end, our desire to have him get a decent education But in the end, our desire to have him get a decent education outweighed that. But obviously, there are sacrifices. As this district continues to open with affordable housing that's supposed to be coming here, most likely bringing other children of color. And I'm not saying that just because someone is black that they're poor and vice versa. But hopefully, you know, this community will begin to open up and not be so homogeneous. I fear for those children, that they'll be subjected to a hostile environment. I couldn't believe when Superintendent Ackerman talked about the fact that this happens in our lower schools, this happens in our middle schools, this happens in high school. I mean, that's not a good thing. That means that this is a racially hostile environment that we're subjecting our black children to. And like the young lady said earlier, it's those types of-- feelings that get black people killed. It's that deep. Racism kills black people. Let's just be clear about that. Okay? It's not like, oh, this isn't fun, or-- Racism kills black people. Let me say that again. Racism is a public health crisis in this country. And I fear for those children, that they'll be, you know, subjected to a hostile environment. Not even one that's overtly so, but the more insidious unconscious biases that we as a nation still grapple with. The same unconscious bias that leads police to kill African Americans with impunity and no consequence. The same no consequence that I feel like happened in this case. And that causes many to think somehow deserve it. I think that the punishment of children in this video--
Angela, I'm sorry, your time is up, but I understand there's two of you there.
I didn't have 30 seconds, though.
It was up there, but that's okay. Just if you could finish your sentence, and we will give your husband-- I understand there's two of you there, which we didn't realize, but you may each have three minutes. But we would need you to finish up, just to be fair to everyone.
I think if this district wants to educate its children to be global citizens, that we have to really deal with teaching active anti-racism. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. And if your husband would like three minutes, please go ahead. Thank you very much.
How you doing? My name is Kyle Helm. I graduated from Horace Greeley in 1987. And I just want to add a couple of things, is that I feel like the situation that happened with the video, and I feel like the situation that happened with the video is appalling. It's disgusting. And I think my main concern is that the-- this happened in February, and now it's June, and now we're talking about-- I feel like it was something that was swept under the rug. It was something that you guys didn't really want to let out into the public forum. And now we're here talking about it. And I feel like the punishment, which we all know, whether we can talk about it or not, did not fit the crime. You have children smiling on camera saying nigger, and yes, I said nigger out loud. That is not something that's acceptable in this day and age. My parents moved here in 1980, and I've been hearing that word since then. And not one thing has changed. Not one punishment, not one, you know, some kid getting expelled. Not, you know, I think that young man made a great point that these are things that should be placed on children's transcripts. These are not things that should be taken lightly. And I will take, and I'll leave it at that, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Teddy Graves? Okay, we can see your name up there, but we don't have your video and audio yet.
Hello? Can you see me?
We can see you now, so if you can go ahead and state your name and your information. Thanks so much, Teddy.
Yes, so I am Teddy Graves. I'm the class of 2014 from Horace Greeley High School. What I just wanted to first say is that, Ms. Ackerman, I feel like you're lying to everybody. You keep on saying, I find it funny that you keep on saying, "These people were held accountable." They weren't held accountable. They got two days suspension, 48 hours. What you're telling me is that somebody can just call me nigger and say, "You know what? Just sleep it off. Come back in 48 hours, and everything will be okay." The fact that they got two days says more about how you guys look at me than what they do. Because as kids, we all make mistakes. I'm 25. I make mistakes all the time. What your response to that showed how little you care for me, how little you see me. I feel like everybody on this board does not have one iota of what it means to be black in this community. Maybe save for Mrs. Tip. This board, you guys are talking about diversity. I see one black member. I don't see any diversity on this board. When I first saw this video, I cried. I felt frustrated. And, you know, me personally, I was a captain of the football and basketball team. So seemingly, people saw me smile, they saw that I fit in, and they didn't think that I went through this experience. Every single day, I've been through this experience, and quite frankly, you guys are cowards. Quite frankly, the president-- I mean, the principal of Horace Greeley is a coward, and you guys all be ashamed of yourselves. To give those students 48 hours-- my sister once opened up a door, my three older siblings, she opened up a window, and you guys gave her a two-day suspension. You're lying to us. Do not say they've been held accountable, because a 48-hour suspension is not held accountable. My life is not worth 48 hours. It is appalling. It makes me furious. And you guys need to seriously look in the mirror and say, "What am I gonna do to create change?" You guys are talking about, "Oh, let's do this, let's do that." Not one of you guys have reached out to me. I've not one black person that I know that you guys have reached out to, to think of this issue. In terms of educational role models, thank God I have my dad and my grandpa to look up to as great black men. Not one time was I introduced to a black role model. It wasn't until I went to Princeton and I took African American Studies class that I actually got introduced to Marcus Garvey, Black Consciousness, One Drop Rule. To me, black was not beautiful. It is not seen as beautiful in the Chappaqua School District system. It's not. And in terms of you guys saying, "What would more suspension do?" The more, at least the harsher punishment would show me that you guys actually value me and see me. You guys don't see me. This incident shows everything about you more so than them. And it is appalling, and I cannot even say it enough. It breaks my heart that I have to even give this speech. I shouldn't be teaching this to you guys. We shouldn't be the ones telling you guys what to do. You guys are cowards, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Teddy. Tara Ramirez? Hi Tara, can you just state your full name and your connection to Chappaqua? Thank you.
Hi, we are Tara and Carlos Ramirez, parents of middle school, all middle school children here in Chappaqua. I'll apologize for any redundancy. I wrote this before everyone spoke. So, that said. As many of you know, our daughter and eighth grader at Bell, and one of her classmates were recently the victims of a racist attack online. The individual who perpetrated this attack created a fake TikTok account to do so, and had the audacity to associate the fake account with the name and photo of a third innocent Bell student. There's a high probability that the individual who perpetrated this act is a student of the school potentially in the same grade. The case is currently being investigated by the Newcastle PD and the Westchester County DA's office. In the end, whether the individual is prosecuted or not is not up to us. We raise our incident on this call because, as we are now fully immersed in the age of the internet, where bullying and/or racism knows no boundaries, our schools, our district, our board, and our community have a duty to address the behavior of its young people, even when it happens outside of school hours and school grounds. Indeed, many schools in this country, state, and our-- in this county, state, and our country have already adopted policies that extend to students' online misbehavior, towards other students even when it doesn't happen at school. While our family was heartened by the community's outpouring of support after learning of the attack on our daughter, sadly, this is not enough. We need to do more. These incidents will continue if left unchecked, and the people who will bear the greatest burden will be the targets of the violence themselves. That is unacceptable. We are better than that. Our children look to us for guidance, and the message they're getting is unclear. Just last week, my husband, of Puerto Rican descent, walked into a local restaurant wearing a baseball cap and mask as required by law. A white patron at the establishment called out to him, "Who is that?" To which he responded, "It's Carlos." The patron then said, "Carlos? I wouldn't say that name too loud. Someone might think you're here to rob the place." To the person who asks me, "Come on, this stuff still happens," I say for damn sure it still does. It was incumbent upon us as a community to condemn these online acts with swift and fierce urgency, even before our country was on fire and forced to confront itself and its racist past, one that clearly extends to the present. Now, the current climate necessitates an immediate unambiguous response to these issues. The individual who targeted my daughter is probably hurting, probably severely misguided on issues of race and/or all of the above. They've probably also been taught, perhaps even implicitly, that they are absent from accountability. This is learned behavior. We know that healing and change comes in part with education, and we need all parents to do that at home. We also need the district to provide supports and resources moving forward. Facing history is a good start. We hope that the district interrogates itself, looks for the blind spots in the curriculum, in the school and in its school and classroom libraries, and in its messaging to students about inclusivity of the disenfranchised and the voiceless. Being a leader right now is hard. Taking responsibility is hard. But we can be leaders in our own spaces, in our homes, and don't-- I just need 10 more seconds-- and don't need to wait for a directive from the top to make change. The time is now to let our children know exactly where we stand so that everyone can feel safe and included in our community. We can afford the discomfort of difficult conversations. We can handle the pain of looking at ourselves, our homes, and our community, and saying, "Yes, this happens here too." We can get uncomfortable for a moment in honor of and in solidarity with those who have done so all of their lives.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Thank you. Juliette Harrison?
Hi.
Hi Juliette. Yes, we can hear you and see you, so go ahead and state your name and your connection to the community. Thanks so much.
Okay, great. My name is Juliette Harrison. I use she/her pronouns. And I graduated from Horace Greeley in 2018. And I'm an English major entering my junior year at Mount Holyoke College. I just wanted to come to this meeting to state that me and Alessandra Allman, who graduated Greeley in 2017, created a Facebook group called Chappaqua Anti-Racism Dialogue: Reconciling Privilege. Our work here is not only for the improvement as a whole community, but also to amplify Black and POC voices. This is a space for education, not for performative activism. We want to give space for people to share articles and then facilitate upcoming Zoom conversations. We want this space to be inclusive and not tokenized Black POC voices either. We have a responsibility to educate ourselves and look at these issues from our positions of privilege. Other things is that I'm also extremely disturbed by the many Chappaqua residents that did not become vocal activists and allies until racism hit close to home. No one seemed to care about the death of George Floyd and countless other black people being murdered in our country. And only until racism was uncovered in Chappaqua, people were outraged and surprised. This is not surprising. We must do better. This Facebook group is supposed to be a plan to be a part of that change, and I hope other residents listening will join in our commitment to justice through our platform. Another point that I'd like to make is that I'm also disturbed by the amount of police presence at Horace Greeley campus. This, I know, is supposed to be to protect from school shooters, et cetera. But this seems also like performative security. It's harmful to the students of color on campus, where the police have been a system to oppress and abuse people of color and black people. We need, I think we need to redistribute the money that is used for having police at the school to restore justice programs, social workers, and more after-school programs focused for cultural orgs. Chappaqua needs to recognize its privilege in order to use it in the fight for racial justice and anti-racist action. And I really hope that some change will come about soon. And that is my piece to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Johanna Nayar? Or Neyar?
Hello.
Hi Johanna, we can see and hear you, so go ahead, state your name and your connection to the community. Thank you so much.
Hi, I feel like I am the prodigal child returning. My name's Joanna Nayar. I've had two kids who passed out of the Chappaqua school system. And listening to everyone speak, I'm remembering how we used to come by and bother you guys, the BOE, which trough, and how nothing ever happened or came to happen with that. It was swept under the rug. And here we are again, talking about racism. A concern of mine, I'm only going to talk about, is safety. We send our kids to the school to feel safe. I understand a lot of stuff happens at home, which I cannot put to you guys, but I'm talking about school safety. And I'm gonna leave it at that, and I would like you all to think about that. Another thing I want to bring up is talking about school safety and the current candidates for BOE. It was brought to light that one of the candidates has a similar situation going on.
I just will say that we are not supposed to talk about personally identifiable things at our meeting, so thank you.
I apologize for that. Once again, you know, just gonna tell you guys and ask you guys, we've been down this road before. We've come back to this road, even though it's another kind of concern. This time, I'm a little older, I'm a little wiser. And I just say, "Let's make it different this time. Let's change it as much as we can." Come on, guys, enough now. There's no need to put stuff under the rug anymore. Let's, you know-- as a mother now, my kids are grown up, I feel empathy for those kids who were in those videos as a person of color. I'm still a mother, and I don't want them to feel, you know, aggressive bullying, and I care for their safety. So I just feel we have a chance again to make things right. So let's do it this time. You know, let's be the change, instead of always, you know, having to deal with our reputation. Everything doesn't have to be pristine all the time. We are allowed to make mistakes, and, you know, it's okay if we acknowledge it and move on. But we need to change. And I promise you, I won't be back to harass you all this time. Take care.
We very much appreciate your comments. Thank you, Johanna.
Take care. Bye.
Bye-bye. Jared Casper? Hi Jared, we still can't see you.
Yeah, I'm doing that right now. Perfect.
Okay, go ahead and state your name and your information for us. Thanks so much, Jared.
Hi, I'm Jared Casper. I'm a senior at Horace Greeley right now. And I think that one of the things that we need to talk about is our next steps, how we plan on preventing something like this, something so awful, from happening again. I keep hearing Dr. Ackerman and the school board discuss how we plan on utilizing more expansive education about racial issues in the hopes that we'll have some better understanding of the egregious language and hate speech that we've seen circulating. But you have to understand that we've had this education in place for years. We haven't had enough by any means, but the crux of this issue is not about how much education we offer. It's our community's complete obliviousness to the overt racism in Chappaqua. The students don't understand the extent to which it occurs, how frequently these derogatory comments are. And I've literally seen some of the parents ask how systemic racism exists, since we had a black man for president. The ignorance is astounding. And the students in specific, they aren't gonna understand anytime soon because the district says that they can't report on racial incidents. We found out about the video and circulation four months after it happened. Well, I have a question. How many other instances have we not found out about? I understand that the school cannot victimize individual students, and I'm not suggesting that they do, but I don't understand how students and parents alike are supposed to understand how much-- understand how much racism has infiltrated our community because we just keep it quiet. And because the school, whether by necessity or by choice, I'm not sure, sweeps it under the rug. And because we lack this understanding of what actually happens in our own school, the students respond to this racial education with complete apathy, and they skip meetings, and the parents, too. It's horrible that the students respond with apathy, but I think that we need to understand that, and I think we need to really focus on how we're supposed to encourage the students to care about this, because it really sucks that we have to talk about this, but so many students don't. And once all of this dies down, really, in like a few years or something, we're just gonna think that racism doesn't permeate our own community because we're not hearing about it. And because we don't ever hear about it, we never learn from our mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jared. Laura Allman. Also, I did just want to mention, because and perhaps I didn't make this clear earlier, I do see some people, if you've spoken, not to raise their hand again, everyone does just get one opportunity for a three-minute comment, and if there is something else you need to send us, please send it to us. But we just can't call on people repeatedly. My apologies for not making that clear. Okay. Hi, Laura Allman, how are you? Can you just, you can state your name yourself and your connection to the community. Thank you.
I'm Laura Allman, and I'm an alumni from, I think, 2018. So firstly, I'd like to say that your history classes are told from a white winner's perspective. They're completely whitewashed and racist, and I want everyone on this call to know that in my AP History class, I was asked to argue the validity of slavery. That's not okay at all. We need readings with more diverse authors of race, gender, sexuality, ethnicity. I want DuBois, I want, who else did I put? Bell Hooks, I want Frederick Douglass's life narrative to be required reading in middle school, and I want 13th to be required viewing, too. Racism is also not the only problem you guys have to address. It's important right now, but I witnessed an unmeasurable amount of ableism, not only racism, homophobia, transphobia, and complete ignorance to Indigenous problems at all. There was a concert where people were mocking Indigenous people, and there was not enough punishment. You guys should have stopped that. I don't understand how you didn't. Leila Grant is gonna come on the call, her, I'm sorry, they, Alice Hayaw, Adam Cece, and I think one other person put a list of bands, and you guys need to implement them immediately, as well as focus on community ideals. Chappaqua is so competitive and focused on capitalism, you guys need to completely restructure your values to focus on kindness and community. If you want to be a school that focuses on community, or just a town that cares about each other, you guys need to change your values immediately. Lastly, to all the parents and white liberals and Democrats on this call, read critical theory. Don't just teach your kids about racism, learn about it, too, and then go back and tell them. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Hi, everyone. I'm a senior, graduated from Greeley in two weeks. And, you know, I'm really excited to be able to say some thoughts. I'm a POC student. I moved to Greeley three years ago from a low-income district in upstate New York. Some of you may be familiar with it. It's the University School District, so I think my experiences have kind of made me a little bit enlightened to some of the incidents going on right now. Firstly, I just kind of want to point off, I point out rather, that, you know, there's definitely, the response so far that I've witnessed has sort of been performative, and I think we definitely need a lot more concrete steps going forward. I'm sort of a little bit disappointed that, you know, the board response, especially the email that came out from the administration, didn't really provide any concrete steps going forward. I want to say that I've written a piece, an open letter to the board that I've just emailed earlier yesterday that spoke to some of my experiences and what I've witnessed and what I think needs to happen going forward. Already, three teachers have reached out, expressing how much that letter resonated with them, inspired them. So I think there is a lot of collective anger towards the top-down sort of passiveness towards race in this district. For me personally, I think that's something that really needs to be touched on, is that there's an overall apathy towards race and a passiveness that, just like I said, needs to be addressed. We can't continue to step back and not be active on this issue. I think the cliche right now is that you can't be not racist, but you have to be anti-racist, and I think that needs to be really implemented from the top down in multiple phases. I think, A, from the administrative standpoint, there has to be a concrete plan about how we're gonna lay out our anti-racist policy. B, I think we need to hire, increase diversity amongst our staff. That includes, you know, adding POC teachers and administrators and board members. And then additionally, we need to really relook at our education policy. So that includes having required readings from minority authors and introducing different history classes. I know for seniors right now, you were enrolled in AP History, AP European History is our primary social studies option, but we're not really given many options outside of that, and more elective and African-American history, or any minority history, that that study is a very minimal part of our experience with high school experience. So I think there has to be a complete overhaul of our system in that we, in order to really emphasize a greater awareness, because as many pointed out, there's a widespread privilege and ignorance. And the only way to really counter that is a greater education awareness. For me, I've, you know, experienced a lot of microgressions and smaller forms of racism that have definitely impacted me strongly, and I've also witnessed a large resource disparity from students in Newburgh to students here, and a lot of privilege and cultural appropriation here. And I feel a lot of my peers are just completely blind to that, and teachers and administration are blind to that because we're passive and apathetic towards race, and we can't be afraid to really have these conversations, to engage in discourse, and to be active, because or else we're just gonna keep laying implicit lapses and systemic racism to be swept under the rug.
Thank you, Zain. Zain, your three minutes are up. Thank you so much.
Just one sentence.
Zain, you could finish your sentence. Go ahead.
And the last thing I want to finish off on is saying that I'm graduating from Greeley in two weeks, and I'm a little bit just baffled by the fact that I'm not really overcome with this sort of exaltation, but rather, I'm just confused about the passiveness and discipline, the passiveness in our administration and just, yeah.
Thank you for your thoughts, Zain. We appreciate it. Jen, we can, we don't have your video yet, but we're waiting.
I'm starting video. Hi.
Hi, Jennifer, we can see you now.
Okay, great.
Okay, so just state your name and your connection to the community. Thank you so much.
Right. I'm Jennifer Klein, and I have a ninth grader at Greeley. Back in 2016, I, Madeline Feinsmith and Dr. Catherine Good, formed a small subcommittee out of what was then Chappaqua Friends of Hillary, which then became UP2, to address what had become toxic rhetoric in our country, rhetoric targeting specific groups of people with hate, and what we recognized as micro-situations in our district that revealed a growing problem of intolerance. The three of us met with every principal in the district back in 2017 to ask what they would do to create meaningful diversity and tolerance programming. Dr. Good brought her expertise in social psychology, and I am also a psychologist, and brought my knowledge as well. Madeline knew the district functioning very well, so she was invaluable to our committee. All of the principals were receptive to speaking with us, but all treated this as a one-off meeting and never circled back to us to address what changes they might make in response to our suggestions. In 2018, I was on the Town Diversity and Inclusion Committee, and we invited Dr. Ackerman to come to speak with us. Dr. Elizabeth Feigelson and I were the liaisons for the committee to the school district, again, with the hopes of addressing diversity issues and concerns and potential harm to marginalized students, and to raise awareness, sensitivity, compassion, kindness, and tolerance for all students. Dr. Ackerman listened and validated our concerns for the need to enhance and build more diversity education infrastructure, but again, it was a one-off meeting. No revisiting occurred. Now it is 2020. So to be clear, I do not blame the district for the specific recent video, but I am disappointed that we function in a reactive instead of a proactive way. So now, I'd like to ask, what kind of specific diversity programming and what consultants, because we need consultants, will you bring in to build this aspect of the curriculum? And how do we move to a more proactive stance on issues in general, especially when parents in the community step forward to express serious concerns? And finally, can the students involved, since they are known to us, be asked to make repair in some way, some form of apology and amends or service, not as discipline, but as an ask of them? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kimber Sans, I'm sorry, Kimber Sans Severino.
Hi there.
Hi, go ahead. We can see and hear you, so go ahead with your name and your connection.
Okay, so I'm Kimber Frank Sans Severino. I have a 12-year-old in sixth grade at Bell Middle School. And I have to say, this has been difficult times, and what's going on right now is really crazy. My daughter's handling it well. And I guess let me start off by saying, my husband and I both came from humble means, and we do well living in Chappaqua. Yeah, and I guess she's taking it well, and I think you guys have done a great job homeschooling. But as far as racism, we brought her up to be raised in a very accepting environment. That by means said, her first grade, I think, I think it was her first grade music teacher and his partner adopted a Chinese baby, and she's like, mommy, why do men marry men? And I was like, well, everybody's different, sweetheart. You just have to be accepting. She got that. And then she's had Muslim friends, or all friends of different religions, all friends of different races, even in Chappaqua, and she's just been really accepting. And my message to you guys tonight is, how can we foster that hope and acceptance to move forward and foster that at a very young age? And I think that's the message, to be just accepting. Everybody's different.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Okay. So hopefully.
Hello.
We can hear you, but we can't see you right now. Now we can, so go ahead and state your name and your connection to Chappaqua. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sammy Contractor. I'm an alumni from the class of 2019. Before I begin, I just wanted to preface my statement that I hope in the coming weeks and months, Greeley's predominantly white administration has the self-awareness to understand that more listening and less talking in a time like this might serve them well in adequately addressing some of these issues. It's sad to say, but I wasn't surprised seeing a lot of this. I remember being told, hey, you're Muslim, Sammy, but you're one of the good ones. Despite experiencing that, I still can't even imagine how difficult it is being Black in Chappaqua. With that being said, my confusion mostly centers around the timeline of events, specifically that of the administration's response. What is the explanation for Greeley's administration not making a statement or formally condemning this immediately upon hearing it? What specifically stopped them from coming out against this on the record right away? I can't imagine what it was like being a member of the freshman class as a Black person or person of color in general, and having to wait months before the school formally came out against this, especially because these are freshmen. This is their introduction to the administration. If the administration gets wind of a racist incident and doesn't immediately comment on it, do something about it right away. I remember last year, while serving as student body president, I attended a meeting that included members from our Greeley's administration in addressing another incident of racism when the N-word was found in a bathroom stall. I remember throughout that meeting, the only thing any Greeley administrator said in that room was condemning the incident. There was never any conversation about proactive steps and policies we could actually implement to address both the explicit as well as implicit racism that is rampant across Chappaqua. Seems to me that this administration has the pattern of not being proactive in terms of taking concrete steps immediately and actually improving after incidents like these. I feel like a lot of the conversation within majority-white school districts has to explain how implicit racism often lays the foundation for the explicit racism that becomes easier to condemn and move on from. This situation is an example of such egregious explicit racism, and thus, there was a large community outrage behind it. What's getting less attention is the implicit racism, like the lack of diversity in our administrators and teachers, our curriculum and history classes, town residents attempting to block lower-income residential programs from being introduced, friend groups that rarely feature a person of color. These are easier to ignore on a daily basis, but they lay the groundwork for these egregious acts. Moving forward, Chappaqua needs to move with the intention of making clear to students that racism exists where you see it and where you don't, and what you should be hoping to build with these new policies and programs is a greater mindfulness for all students. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Sammy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you and see you, so go ahead and state your name and your community connection. Thank you.
Thank you. I am a Greeley graduate from the class of '02, and moved back here with my wife at the first opportunity, honestly, that we could afford to, several years before we even had kids. And the main reason being that we wanted to be a part of the Chappaqua school system. Some of my teachers and Mr. Garcia may not necessarily, you know, remember that that would be something that I would have wanted to do, but I really feel connected to it and hearing some of the, I'm encouraged by the fact that there are students who are much more recent grads who are involved and passionate in this meeting, and kind of surprised, but pleasantly so about that. But honestly, what's most disturbing to me, even more so than the video, is that when I read an article about this, several students talked about how it's a culture. You know, there was a 2018 graduate who said she was, quote, appalled but not surprised, and the fact that she wasn't surprised is really, really heartbreaking and really upsetting, and I'm sure it is to all of you. And so, you know, I think it was Divya was one of the first speakers who said that, you know, the attitude that, oh, kids do stupid stuff, this isn't in that category, as she said, and I agree with that wholeheartedly. You know, this is just, it's a cultural, you know, cultural issue, so just kind of two things I wanted to say. One is, in terms of like concrete steps rather than berating you guys, because it may or not be partially, you know, your fault in terms of anything like that, but people have done that plenty so far. But the two kind of concrete things that I wanted to say, one, to, you know, not just educate students, but educate parents, you know, people who are certainly much older than me, who are the ones who have kids in the school system now, and, you know, grew up in, you know, in a different time, and that's not a good excuse for anything, but it's not, it's not excusing everything to try to correct the situation in the future. So any kind of programs that can, you know, educate parents on these kinds of things. And also, I think one of the board members mentioned a board advisory committee, you know, my suggestion would be to include students for this, not just in the focus groups that you mentioned, but include students throughout the year and throughout future years, because, you know, they don't, I mean, when I was a student, I hadn't, I couldn't have told you one name of any administrator, you know, above Mr. Sleznik, who was the, you know, at the time, and, you know, to not feel any connection, not feel like you have any voice. I think that, you know, for you guys to have that connection and the feedback from students is probably, you know, helpful to know whether these kinds of things are being fostered in the culture or not. So thanks, and hopefully you guys implement some of the things that I was talking about.
Thank you so much, Jeremy. Okay, we still don't have video or audio on Robbie. Let's give it another second. Okay, we still don't have video or audio on Robbie. Let's give it another second. Okay, Robbie, if you can hear me, I'm so sorry that we can't hear you or see you. If there's a problem, then you can log back on and raise your hand. We will get to you. Thank you so much. The next person is John Sau.
Hello?
Yes, hi, we can see you. We can hear you. So go ahead and state your name and your community connection and go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Sharon Lee. I'm a parent of a sixth grader at Seven Bridges. We just basically moved to the community over the last year. And I just want to say I'm really disheartened that, like, this incident happened. But I think when a racist incident happens, you have to communicate it to the parents. Like, by not communicating it whatsoever, you're covering up for racism. You're tolerating racism, in fact. And I think if there's an email blast that goes out to the parents, maybe it starts conversations around the dinner table. And, you know, at least kids get like reinforcement from their parents that, okay, hey, you know, something happened, like, you're not doing this stuff, right? Like, you know, just making sure that, like, they're getting like a continuous message. And I think that will help more than, you know, committees or like even, like classes, literature, just, you know, parent involvement.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Ella Smith. Sorry, Ella Smith.
Hello?
Hi, go ahead. State your name and go ahead.
Okay, I'm Ella Smith. I'm in the class of 2020. And I just wanted to bring up some ways that like institutional racism is seen in Chapua and also some suggestions as to how we can fight it. First of all, I wanted to say the issue of having no teachers of color in Chapua actually really puts racial biases in students from a young age. The people that students will look up to, white students included, other than their parents, are their teachers. And if none of their teachers are of color, all of their teachers are white, they will be conditioned to only look up to people who are white. They're not conditioned to look up to people of color. And that is extremely detrimental to their view of the world. And this is what puts these biases in students in Chapua. Another thing to bring up is that a lot of white parents are part of the problem, and that's not being addressed at all. I've seen this in groups, Facebook groups online of parents. I've seen this even in public articles online of issues of parents being racist in Chapua. And that's part of the reason why anti-racist teaching needs to be started from a very young age for students in Chapua, because the parents cannot be dependent upon to teach their children what is racist and what is not. Many parents refuse to believe that they're racist, refuse to believe that they're part of the problem. They think that just because their child has a Chinese friend, that their child's not racist, their child is completely loving, but they don't realize that they're raising children to have racial biases as well. And that's something that I think should definitely be addressed. Another thing is that the history classes do not address the fact that racism still exists today. Until I was about 13 years old, my history classes led me to believe that racism was not an issue after MLK's movement ended. And that's, that's a huge problem. Obviously, racism is still a problem today, a very prevalent problem. But the school has led me to believe otherwise. Also, the school leads us to believe that racism in history was mainly a problem in the southern region of the United States. They don't address that it, there was slavery in New York. There was slavery everywhere. The area we live in now is still marked by slavery deeply. And there's terrible institutional racism where we live. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ella. Christopher Mezias.
Hello?
Hi, Christopher. You can state your name and your community connection. Go ahead. Thank you so much.
My name is Chris Mezias. I am a grad from 2008. And my parents and sister all still live in Chapua. So I just want to say that a lot of other people have touched on much more eloquently. And obviously, you can see I'm a white guy much more personally than I ever could on how racism within the community affects them. And I want to back them up and say, this was a common thing that I heard all the time. Casual racism towards students of color all the time. When I was in middle school, when I was in high school, constantly. But there's something else that I think we need to touch upon, which is the casual racism directed at other communities, especially majority-minority communities in the rest of Westchester. I heard those places referred to as ghettos. I heard them referred to as filled with animals, as filled with thugs. This was common, like an everyday occurrence. I want to make this very clear. And I think really part of the problem is not only the lack of diversity among staff, but I think that is something that needs to be fixed, especially among teaching faculty. But it was also because the way we are taught about racism and race in this country in this school is, oh, back 300 years ago, we did bad things to Native Americans. And then there was slavery, and then there was the Civil Rights Movement. But it's all happy now. That's all that racism was. It was just making sure black people couldn't vote and that they were slaves. And that's it. Nothing else. It's all fine now. We are never taught about how communities like Chapua came to exist. I'm talking about predominantly white. Is it 90-plus percent white? Predominantly wealthy? Is it 95-plus percent extremely wealthy? They came to exist because of redlining. We need to talk to students about things like this. We need to make it clear to students that the reason why some communities are much poorer than ours has nothing to do with the people living there. They are not less than us. And this is how they were referred to constantly. It's because of practices like redlining. It's because of persistent underfunding of those communities because of political decisions made at the state and county level. We need to teach this to students. And if we don't teach this to students, they are not going to understand the many ways in which racism still exists in our society and the many ways in which we benefit in Chapua off of the backs of other people. They need to understand this. They need to have this perspective. And they need to understand that the people in other communities around Westchester are not less than, we simply live in a racist system that disproportionately benefits people like me and not, and like them, and not people around the wider community, basically. We need to teach them about these things. We need to teach them about racism as it exists today. And we don't.
Thank you for your thoughts, Christopher. We appreciate it. Evan? I don't see a last name, just Evan.
Hi. There we are.
Great. I can see and hear you. So if you can give us your first and last name and your relationship to the community. Thanks so much.
Sure. My name is Evan Judson. I graduated with the class of 2008 from Greeley. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I thought a lot about what I want to express today. There's a lot of people in the community that are upset with the leniency of the... Sorry, I'm... I know I can't talk about that. Nor can I express how hard it must be to pass down some sort of judgment on children. I believe it's important to acknowledge that all of us here have been ignorant at one time or another and have have hurt somebody else through our actions, whether it be someone of our race or someone of a minority. And I think that is a very important step in, in growing from this. Because we're at a juncture right now where we have the opportunity to really change things. In my experience at Greeley, or throughout the entirety of Chapua school districts, I don't believe, I can recall ever having a black teacher or any real education as, as to the impact of racism. And racism doesn't always come from, from, you know, specific racism. We've been talked, we've talked about microaggressions. And that is a big part of it. And I'm not above that either. And it really wasn't until I was able to grow up and see the rest of the world and realize the harm that I have personally caused because of my ignorance. And ignorance is just a lack of knowledge. And you as educators have a responsibility to eradicate ignorance from the world. We need more black teachers. We need more classes dedicated to showing how difficult minorities have had it in this country from the get-go. And how that affects where we are as a people today. How it's stuck with us, how it stayed with us, how we haven't gotten rid of it. And we talk about it. Thank you. We talk about it. But we don't do anything about it. We just brush it under the rug because we can just check a little box that says, all right, I handled it. Well, the next time it happens. And that's not okay anymore. We need to change. We need classes. We need education. And I love the idea of sending out emails. I understand you not wanting to condemn any individual people when occurrences like this happen. And I understand you not wanting to have names. Just about to finish, but making, I understand. Making the community aware that this is a problem goes a long way. Because then it also allows the parents of the children to know that it's happening in the schools on a, on a, on a macro scale, instead of just the individuals that, that partook in it. You understand?
Thank you, Evan. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Thanks. Lara Fuhrer.
Hello?
Hi, Lara. Go ahead and state your name and your community connection. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lara Fuhrer, and I graduated in the class of 2014. I want to echo Angela and Teddy's words from earlier, that racism kills black people. Black people's lives are worth more than 48 hours. My friends' lives are worth more than 48 hours. I graduated with Alyssa Ashley, and I can recall the racism she experienced to her face and behind her back, both covert and overt. I'm ashamed that I didn't speak up often on her behalf or on the behalf of other friends of color and barely, very likely contributed it, contributed to it without even realizing how hurtful my impact was. This is not a reflection of my parents' teachings and not an excuse for any past behavior of mine, nor an observation of white guilt. But I can't help but feel if I was taught how to be an activist and speak up against discrimination and racism in my Chapua schooling, I would have done more. If there were, if there was a better teaching of our history nationally, but also here in Chapua, as to how we even get to live in a privileged predominantly white town on indigenous land is largely due to policies and violent histories such as redlining and more. We need to learn our dark history so we can change and be better. We can no longer teach ignorance in our schools. And where is the representation by staff and faculty of color? There are hardly any. Where is the literature, music, arts representation? Additionally, we need staff and faculty to learn how to intervene when they hear or see something and not just pretend to deal with it without using it as a real teaching opportunity in our schools and at home without it being addressed. Diversity consultants need to be hired to evaluate the flaws in our education system that fuel institutionalized racism. Being a mostly white community isn't an excuse to not teach how to be anti-racist and correct your peers and students if, even if in an only white group. We have to learn to be allies in all, in all spaces. While we have so many students who graduate from our district and go on to do great work, mature and learn, we also have many who enter workforces that aid in systemic racism. And I believe so much of this comes from a place of ignorance without teaching from an early age in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lara, very much. Deborah G. Hi, Deborah. We can see you. Is your audio on?
It should be.
Okay, yes. Go ahead and state your name and your connection. Thank you so much.
I know it says Deborah G. That's my maiden name. I'm Deb Whiteson. I've got two rising seniors, Shana and Zach Whiteson, in the class of 2021. I'm going to take a really, really, like, two seconds because I want to clear as much space as I can here for the people of color, for our recent alumni who have given such strong testimony here, and for others to continue to do that because I think it's more important. And because what I want to raise is going to be muted. But I do want the board to look closely at the candidates, one in particular. I will not...
I can't talk about that. I'm sorry.
Then I'll take 30 seconds of silence to have everybody think about that, please, since we can't talk about the big pink elephant in the room and all clear space for the people whose testimony matters.
Deb, thank you. If there's anything else you want to say, we will listen to that. We just can't discuss that topic.
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to move on to Leah Dins. Okay, we're still waiting for Leah Dins. I don't know if he, let's give another second to see if she can get her audio and video working. Okay, I'm very sorry, Leah. If you can get that going, come back in, raise your hand, and we will get to you. I'm going to move on to Ellen Schwebel. Ellen, we see something on your screen, but don't have full video on you. Let's give it one more second and see if you can get your video and audio going. Okay, I'm sorry, Ellen. My apologies. We cannot see or hear you. And we, I think we will move on to Leila Saiedi Grant.
Hi, my name's Leila Saiedi Grant, and I'm an alumni of Greeley. My dad is also listening, and he's going to say something quickly after me.
Okay.
Okay. So first of all, make no mistake, racism in our school system and community is directly connected to racism around America, including that which caused the murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Tony McDade. Like Angela said, racism kills black people. Punishment, much like, much like incarcerating police who murder black people, can influence these individuals' futures. But what about the system their racism reflects? Students and cops learn not to post their racism or not to turn on their body cameras, but they will still be violently racist. White supremacy is ingrained in American public schools, the police system, the prison industrial complex, and all three of those are related. This is a systemic issue and it needs systemic change. I don't know the proper consequences for these students. From what I've recently learned about restorative justice, every situation of harm is different and must be dealt with according to people's needs. But punishing these students doesn't treat the harm they caused to students of color or prevent it from happening again. We need them, along with all students, parents, and faculty, to learn what systemic racism is and to build systems where they and others are actually held accountable in the long term. The examples of change that the Board of Ed emailed the district a few days ago were not enough. If you look closely at the language, much of it is about diversity, examining and addressing racism, being able to process racism, being more inclusive, having a wider range of books to read from. This is not enough. And honestly, it is still centering white people. Diversity is not equivalent to being anti-racist. Language like tolerance and acceptance brings us away from focusing on the needs and the pain and harm of students of color. It decenters racism, white privilege, and police brutality. We need teachers, administrators, and guidance counselors who are not just diverse, but actively anti-racist. We need a diversity counselor that students of color are comfortable talking to. We need a diversity counselor that students of color are comfortable talking to. We need Chappaqua Central School District to break its ties with the police department as public school districts across the country are currently doing. Why are cops in our hallways? Why is a cop car always outside when I was at Greeley and still there? Let's not criminalize our own student body. Why are white students let off so much easier than Black students? There's a long history of instances of police brutality against Black students across America. No cops should be at our school, period. We need to make sure all families feel engaged in their children's education, especially working parents, who are more often people of color. We need a long-term racial equity plan that includes all of this. If any students or alumni want to reach out to me to see a list of demands that me and mostly students of color from the class of 2018 and 2019 have been working on, please message me on Facebook. My name is the same name here. I also fully support Victoria's tips, ideas, and the introduction of restorative justice into our schools and a racial justice advisory board. Okay, and here's my dad.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to be very quick. I'm the father of Leila, who just spoke, and also of a boy who is graduating from Greeley this month. Very quickly, I agree with everything my eloquent daughter said. Number two, in particular, get armed police out of Chappaqua schools. One thing we have learned in the past few weeks is that armed police are viewed one way by white people and a very, very different way by people of color. These police, no matter who they may be as individuals, are viewed as a threat and as dangerous by people of color. Get them out of our schools. Thirdly, to speak about-- what was it, Leila? In the-- Mirrors. To speak about the department store mirrors is a perfect example of a white, privileged microaggression. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. We have C. Deutsch.
Hello? Hi, can you hear me?
Okay, yes. Go ahead, state your name and go ahead. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Corey Deutsch, and I graduated with the class of 2012. I just, I need to point out the elephant in the room. I just, I can't comprehend it. So what, 10, 20 of you are watching this video in February? Multiple videos? And you say, okay, let's keep it quiet and let's just give out a two-day suspension? Like, that was the decision? Like, how does not every, every single bone in your body shiver as you watch that? How do you not decide to tell the public? How do you keep that to yourself? I can't even, can't understand it. Christine, in the beginning, you had said, the beginning of this call, you literally said, even this was not an outstanding case, the public wasn't known as part of the incident. Are you kidding me? Four kids in Greeley are dropping the most heinous word on this planet that you can possibly imagine, and you feel like it should be kept in-house. What is the rationale behind that? What is-- how do you have a rationale behind that? I mean, Christine, really? Come on. I mean, this isn't kids getting drunk at a school dance. It's not a bullying incident. This is disgusting, front to back. I can't believe you said that in the beginning. Like, it's literally on video for everyone to see. It's embarrassing. And you guys-- let me ask you something. If this happened today, if this happened yesterday, would these kids be suspended or expelled? Because I'm going to answer that. These kids would be suspended. So then the question is, what's changed today versus February? The only thing that's changed is how you guys would appear if you suspended versus expended. Let's call spade a spade. The day you would suspend, February-- I'm sorry. The day you would expel, February you would suspend. Nothing about the situation has changed, just how you guys look. That's the only thing that's changed. That's it. And you know that. Am I wrong? Today, wouldn't you just expel? Probably, I'm sorry, would you just-- probably not. You need the rest of the world to speak, and then you make your decision based on what the rest of the world is doing, instead of being leaders of your own community and seeing what's going on and making that decision for yourself. I'm sorry. I got to rationalize everything that you guys are saying, and this is just abysmal. It really is. And you're going to say, thank you, Corey. Thank you for your ideas. Let's move on to the next one. And, but I don't have anything else. That's it. But I'd definitely like you to reflect on what I just said because it's a joke. It's literally-- 20-- how many, how many of you were watching that video in February? How many? Is that anonymous? We can't disclose that either.
Is there anything else you want to say, Corey?
No, I think you got the message.
Thank you so much. I'm going to take one more person, and then we are going to take just a short restroom break for everyone, but I will take the next person. So our screens may go dark for a few minutes, but we will keep everyone in line. I did just want to notice, I see that the next person in line is someone who had previously spoken. And again, I'm very sorry. We do not mean to not allow you, your voice to be heard, but everyone gets one time. We can't be inequitable. So I'm sorry, if you have additional things to say, please submit it to us and know that we will take a look at it. Thank you. The next person is Maggie Christ, and then we will take a short break after that.
Hi.
Can you just-- yes, state your name and your community connection. Thank you so much.
My name is Miranda Christ, and I am a junior at Greeley. In my three years at Greeley, I have often seen acts of blatant racism. This is why I am appalled but far from shocked by the video produced by Greeley students. Flurts are thrown around the hallways and constantly used in jokes. In each video that is surfaced, students are laughing while saying the N-word. It is disgusting to watch but unsurprising for many Greeley students and alumni. In the infrequent instances that a student is caught being racist, the punishment is lenient, and they are not educated about the severity of their actions. Why is the punishment for vaping more serious than for racist behavior? Why are known instances of racism not put on a student's transcript? You say that students in question have been held accountable. I strongly disagree. A two-day suspension is not anywhere near adequate punishment for racism, and they most certainly did not learn their lesson. Why have these students not been asked to issue apologies to the community? We have only just learned of this incident and deserve to hear from them. I also take issue with the statement, but they're just kids. They are minors, yes, but far from children. In the Chappaqua school system, we are taught to be internet and social media literate individuals. These students know what is posted on social media is public and there forever and that anyone can access it. They should have expected the repercussions, and no one can say that they were unaware. The administration must take concrete action to address the prevalent racism in Greeley and in the community. Whether it be amending the code of conduct, hiring a more diverse faculty, or instituting restorative justice policies, the administration must actually do something rapidly and decisively. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. We're going to take a very brief five-minute break. The next person that'll get moved in is Ellen Bick, and we will be back if everyone will turn off their video and audio, and we will be back in five minutes. Thank you so much.
Okay, let's just give everyone another second to get back, okay? Okay, is everyone back now? We're just waiting for Lisa, I think. Oh, we're back. I don't hear anyone. Okay, you're good. All right, just making sure.
I'm here.
Okay, great. And then we commute. Before we left, thank you all for letting us take a short break. Next up to be moved over as a panelist is Ellen Bick. Thank you so much.
Wayne, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ellen. State your full name and go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ellen Bick, and I've had two children that have graduated Greeley. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts today. I have to admit that, living in this community and feeling so privileged, I've been ignorant to the prevalence of everything that has gone on here. And obviously, for a long time. I really appreciate the input of the students and the families of color who've enlightened all of us to what they have to endure and what their children have to endure being in this school system. We all know that the education overall is really great. But I have been enlightened by one of my children recently to understand that just because we brought our children up to be inclusive and to be kind, it's not enough. That means maybe we're not being racist, but we're not being anti-racist unless we take a more active role. And I think that that's the point that was brought up earlier by the social worker who I was really impressed with, that we need to be doing something more proactively. What upsets me most out of this whole thing, I can't look at this as a mistake. I know children make mistakes, and I know teenagers make mistakes. Maybe they drink too much, and they end up sick. But this is an innate hate. And what I feel is that anyone involved in this video needs to be educated. They need, I wouldn't care if they didn't get suspended at all. What needs to happen is for them to understand how what they did impacted other people. They need to be taught. They need to be exposed. They need to learn, and then they need to apologize and stand up and present what white privilege is all about. If they have learned nothing from what you're saying they're being held accountable for, then this is all a waste of time. We need to make sure that we nip this in the bud and all of these children from a young age and on will make it age-appropriate, but to teach them what it is to be anti-racist, what it means to feel, actually feel what a black person is feeling when these actions are taken, and to get a better understanding of this entire situation. And I will basically leave it at that. I just think that the, you know, when I hear that they're held accountable because they got, so they're home. So how did they get suspended? They sat home before, and now they're sitting home? I want them to learn. I want them to grow so that when they become,
Thank you, Ellen.
they understand what they need to teach their children as well. Otherwise, this is going to be here 100 years from now.
Thank you, Ellen. We appreciate your comments. Liam Fenlin? Hi, Liam. Go ahead. Yes.
Thank you.
State your name and go ahead. Thank you.
Great. So, so hi, Chappaq community. I'm a Greeley 2016 grad, and I recently graduated from MIT. And so like many Greeley students, I grew up surrounded by peers from very similar socioeconomic backgrounds as my own. My friends at Greeley were almost all white or Asian, affluent, and had accomplished parents. I wanted to break out from this limited circle in college, and I joined a mostly black and Latino fraternity, where I was one of six non-persons of color out of over 40 members. Most of my college friends were the first in their family to graduate college. Many of them have parents who don't speak English, work hourly or factory jobs, or have uncertain legal status. If the Boston Police Department ever showed up during a party, we always made sure that a white brother went out to talk with them, that anyone with uncertain legal status went upstairs. Thanks to my college friends, I grew more as a person in my freshman year than I did over 10 years in Chappaqua. If I could go back in time, knowing all the obstacles that my friends have overcome, I would have fought far harder for affordable housing in Chappaqua and a better location on that horrible hostile Hunts Lane patch of land. I would have volunteered at Neighbors Link in Mount Kisco to help immigrant families in Westchester. And I would have opened my eyes at Greeley and realized what it means to attend a high school with nearly no people of color, what that must be like for POC students. And to those of you who say that anti-racism needs to come at home, of course, my parents encouraged me to pursue all of this when I was at Greeley, but I did not listen, as I should have, because the community around me at Greeley was not either. Dr. Ackerman said that racist incidents happen at all levels of Chappaqua schools. This is certainly true. And yet, as a Greeley senior, after 10 years in CCSD, I rarely spoke up for my peers when students made overtly racist statements behind their backs or to their faces. And had you asked me as a Greeley senior if Chappaqua had a racism problem, I probably would have laughed. I mean, that's really what a two-day suspension is. It's laughable. And that's exactly why I had to literally, quite literally, get out of town, get out of Chappaqua schools to begin to understand what was happening down the street from our town in Mount Kisco, to begin to understand what it was like to be a person of color in the Chappaqua school system. And that's a massive curricular failure. Somehow, there wasn't time to read works or films by black authors and directors to celebrate black excellence, but we had time to watch 12 Years a Slave. So for those of you with children still in CCSD, I hope that you will fight for more affordable housing in Chappaqua. Rob Greenstein, former town supervisor, said that in Chappaqua, quote, "The only color that matters is the color of your money. I would never trade any amount of money in the world for the experiences I had in college that made me realize what immigrating, working, and living in the United States is like as a person of color or recent immigrant." If you're able to, I hope that you'll take your children to volunteer at communities around us that are in need. It makes a difference, and I think that your children are going to thank you down the road, too. And lastly, to the school board, I hope that you will stand up and show some backbone for every child in this district and push CCSD towards curricular administrative reform. It will bring more points of view, socioeconomic diversity, and anti-racism into Chappaqua schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Liam. Yana Jackson?
Hi.
Hi, Yana. We can see you. Go ahead and state your name and your community connection. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Yana Jackson. I graduated from Horace Greeley in 2011. I fielded her sisters who also graduated from Horace Greeley before me. So I wrote a letter originally to Christine Ackerman, and I'm just going to read that and then speak a little bit. So I said, "Hello, Superintendent Ackerman. My name is Yana Jackson. I graduated from Horace Greeley High School in 2011. I fielded her sisters that graduated from Horace Greeley as well. I write this email as an HTS alumni, a black woman, and a fellow educator." So a video has been brought to my attention via one of the students' Facebook pages, and the video depicts what presumably looks like Harz Greeley students saying nigger in the cafeteria at Harz Greeley High School, which is your cafeteria. While I do not know all the information, nor have I been privy to the specific actions that were taken in response to this video, I choose to believe the words of the student who presented the video. That student said that you failed to adequately address the instance of hate speech that the students in the video received, and that the students in the video received a consequence that is equivalent to a minor suspension. Such a response does not seem sufficient. I sincerely hope that that was not true, because if it is, then you have failed. You have failed as a superintendent, a leader, and a citizen. To be a superintendent in a school district such as Chappaqua, you have the moral and ethical duty to lead by example. To be a superintendent in Chappaqua means that you have immense power because you're educating privileged students with economic and racial privilege who will grow up to hold great power as individuals in our society. Therefore, when you fail to do your job, you directly contribute to the systemic oppression that our country was founded upon. Your negligence to adequately address very problematic and racist behavior is reinforcing the notion that certain people do not need to be held accountable. I hope you understand that this leads to stark racial and economic inequality, and for some, death. You were an educator, and you have taught them a very dangerous lesson. Such a lesson is one that those students in the video will carry into different spaces of their lives. It is a lesson that energizes racism in this country, and I hope that you understand the weight of your actions, because I do not take this lightly, and you must do better. After hearing you all speak, I think you all agree that you must do better, because you are not doing enough. And I think, after watching that video, I mean, one, as Teddy pointed out, and Teddy, thank you for your vulnerability, you, everyone was white, except for maybe the last person. I'm sorry, I do not remember your name. But you guys couldn't even say the word "black." You said "people of color." So starting there, I just think that's like part of the problem. Black is not a bad word. And as Teddy said very well, he learned that it was beautiful. But when you live in Chappaqua and you're someone who is black, it is very hard for that to be conveyed. And having a social justice curriculum, and I looked up, you know, our history or facing ourselves, whatever, I learned about that in grad school. It's also very good, but it takes people and educators to teach that effectively and to also just respond. And the last thing is, when you talk about how a higher suspension is not what is needed, it is. And if you look at the, you know, disproportionate rates of black students who are suspended, expelled, and in prison, that has sent a message to our country that everyone is learning right now. And it sends a message that black people should be punished. So why are these white students who are saying very racist hate, like hate speech, not being punished at all? So consequences are there.
Yana, your three minutes are up, if you could.
Thank you so much.
Okay, but thank you. Thank you for giving your opinion. It's appreciated.
Hey, I would like Yana to finish her sentence. Well, now she's gone.
Okay.
I think, I think we should let people finish their sentence.
I was about to ask her to finish her sentence, but she completed it. So yes, I agree with you. We're trying to let everybody finish their thoughts. Nichelle Maynard Elliott, please.
Ready to go?
Wait, just start video. There we go.
Okay, we can see you. So thank you. Go ahead and state your name and go right ahead. Thank you.
Sure. My name is Wayne Elliott. I'm a resident of Chappaqua. I have two children in the Chappaqua school system. Gabri Elliott, who's the president of Black Student Union at the high school, and a graduating senior, and my daughter, who's a sophomore, Nialia Elliott. My wife, Nichelle Maynard Elliott, graduated from the school. I won't tell you the year. I'll leave that to her to tell you the year that she graduated. I just want to make two comments. Number one, a lot of the experiences that have occurred to black students over the years, the incidents that have kind of been alluded to, occurred with my son, number one. Number two, I unequivocally support Principal Corsilia. He has been the most attentive, supportive, with the desire to get to the heart root cause of things, and has been working on things to get, to help us people of color, and specifically, black people, have a better experience in the, in the school system. So I want to say personally that I unequivocally support Principal Corsilia. With that, I'll turn over to my wife.
I'll be quick, because Gabri wants to make some comments as well. I'm the class of 1986, and I know Kyle Helm. And so this is my second tour of duty here in Chappaqua, having experienced a lot of these things 30-something years ago. Which is why we encouraged our children, once we got into this school district, for the same reasons that Kyle and his wife mentioned, because it's a great education and a great opportunity. We, every time we had an incident with the N-word, we went in and we went with principals in West Orchard, in Seven Bridges, when Mr. Corsilia was principal of Seven Bridges in Chappaqua with the prior principal before we dealt with Mr. Corsilia. And Mr. Corsilia is the one who was able to really pour into the students. And so what I want to encourage, I'm encouraged by all of the alums who are out there talking tonight, and all the parents who are really passionate about this. But I hope that this is not just the emotion of the moment, because there is work to be done, and there's work that is being done. We have, we have had conversations about diversifying the teachers. We've had conversations about the curriculum, and to the comment that was made earlier about, you know, these, these kids are learning the N-word from rappers. Quite frankly, they're learning the N-word from the English books that are read in the curriculum that my kids have to sit in class and hear every time and argue and make comments to their teachers about why they didn't think it was appropriate to necessarily have to use the N-word in class. So I think we really need to think about all of the inputs, and, and I'm going to try to give Gabri some minutes as the head of the president of BSU.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Gabri.
Hello. I'm Gabri. I'm the president of Black Student Union at Horace Greeley. And tonight, I'd like to share a personal story as a lead-in to what I have to say. One day, I walked into an English classroom, and we began to read a book. And we continued to read a book, and multiple different, multiple different chapters passed by. And then the N-word came up. And no one would say it in the room. And then the teacher not only took a stance on how everyone should be able to say the N-word, and took, took the book and then read it out for the class. Now, I would like to say that this is a one-time story, but this happened to me during multiple grades, multiple times. Racism is not new at Greeley, and it didn't start with these videos. And I understand that outrage is a very simple way to react to the situation. And believe me, I am also outraged. But the focus should be on action. I understand that calling out people is a great way to save face. But really, we have to look at how we can create new ways and new pathways to racially equitable society in our town. And the BSU has not only been doing that since last year, but since it was founded two years ago. And a lot of the suggestions that people have been bringing up throughout these, through the, throughout these calls, we have been working on for two years. And that support that they have now was also not present two years ago. So I understand that the anger of the current situation is high, but I, we encourage everyone to support what we've been doing right now and to support what we do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gabri. Violet Goutreau?
Um, hello. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can, and we can see you. So go ahead, Violet.
Thank you very much. Hello, my name is Violet Goutreau. I'm a 2018 graduate of Greeley. I just finished my sophomore year at Princeton University. I would just like to address the importance of teacher diversity training and the importance of a diverse curriculum that's rid of domineering colonial influence. One of my earliest memories in the school district, I think I was around six or seven, was when a well-meaning teacher was teaching a lesson on civil rights. We learned about Martin Luther King, peaceful protest, the fact that we all were equal regardless of skin color. I had no problem with the lesson. It was a good attempt at teaching racism to a class of young, mostly white children. The lesson itself was not the problem. The problem was what transpired afterwards. There was one person of color in my class. She was not black, but that didn't seem to matter. A boy in my class, immediately after the lesson was done, said, "Well, I'm glad the only person in this class that wouldn't be okay in the 1950s was this one girl who had brown skin." This was obviously an uncomfortable moment for everyone in the room. The teacher, whose lesson had not achieved the intended effect included. However, the teacher was obviously so uncomfortable that she chose not to address it at all. We just started the next lesson. She did her job. We read a picture book about Martin Luther King. Her job was done. The difficult conversations didn't need to be had. We had already engaged in a gesture of performative wokeness. The district has not changed. I'm enraged. I remember that moment so clearly, maybe more than any other school moment from when I was that young. That says something. At the time, I couldn't articulate why it was wrong, but I knew it was incredibly wrong. I had nowhere to turn to talk about it, because my teacher had said with her actions that it didn't matter. She was the ultimate authority to me. I didn't have the agency to go to her boss to go to the school. I was a kid. Her actions told me that the feelings of my classmate, who was called lesser-than, to her face, did not matter. I think this anecdote really speaks to the training that teachers in this district do not have. The teacher's discomfort in that moment and unwillingness to have a conversation with a child of privilege led to an act of violence in that classroom. This behavior leads to the systemic slaughter of black bodies. This is one moment of many that I've experienced alone. I'm sure there are thousands more. I just want to say that for a district that can afford a turf football field for a team that never wins, can certainly afford teacher diversity training and the resources needed to recruit diverse teaching staff. I also want to say that the limited conversations I've had in Greeley about race have been in classes that have been absolutely dominated by white cisgender male authors. The first time I read a book by a black author was when I read Toni Morrison in AP English, the second semester of my senior year. The second semester, when half the class was already checked out. And even when we finally discussed Morrison's work, we glossed over the uncomfortable passages, because it was too awkward to talk about the rape of female slaves in the classroom. That definitely made me subconsciously believe, due to the actions of the school, that white male authors are better, they make better work, they make work worthy of attention and discussion. That is unacceptable. You have planted racist ideas within me. And worse, you have told my black classmates that they're inherently lesser than the room full of white people that surrounds.
Violet. Violet, your first.
We need to start in elementary school. I know, I'm not talking about dressing up as Native Americans and perpetuating the myth that the pilgrims and Indians were friends. We need classes that focus on minority experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Violet. Catherine Good?
Hello?
Okay, we're good. We're good to go. Thank you. Just state your name and go ahead, Catherine.
Hi, I'm Catherine Good. I am a parent of an eighth grader and also a sophomore at Greeley, and I've been a resident of Chappaqua for 16 years. I'm a psychology professor at Brute College in the Graduate Center at City University of New York, and I'm the head of our doctoral program there. I teach both undergraduate and graduate courses in social psychology, psychology of learning, stereotypes and prejudice. And it really is from that perspective and platform that I want to base my comments tonight. We simply are faced with a moral moment. We are a town that needs to decide what we want to do with this moral moment, and it is up to us. It's up to us to call out the racist behavior of individuals, and importantly, to direct our energies and resources to dismantling the systemic racism that allows those individuals' values to flourish and behaviors to go unchallenged. It is up to us to commit to an unwavering resolve to root out racism and implement the reforms needed at every level of our schools, including our governance, administration, policies, curriculum, faculty, student body. It's up to us to support leaders who have the moral character and energy to take on the difficult task of leading our district. to take on the difficult task of leading our district through the process of building an anti-racist school system and who hold those anti-racist ideals for themselves and for their families. Racism is learned, pure and simple. It is learned in the home, in school, in society, and through watching others act in racist ways with impunity. People, adults and children both, look to others for guidance about how to behave and what to believe. And when we permit racism from others' words and actions without anyone publicly and loudly saying no, it becomes normative. And once something is normalized, it becomes part of our culture. So here we are. We all bear responsibility. I have two evidence-based suggestions for us. I would say more, but our students have so eloquently already suggested them and I strongly encourage you to listen to them because they were spot on. First, what should our policies be for those who hurt others? Many have called for punitive punishment. Absolutely, people must suffer the consequences of their actions. And we also must accept the unfortunate fact that punishment only works when the offender thinks they're going to get caught. That's it. It does little to nothing to change attitudes, beliefs or behaviors or to repair those who are harmed. So we need to adopt restorative justice policies and approaches to all forms of harm done by students and adults. And after listening to the students tonight, I think that that restorative justice approach needs to apply to our leaders in the school district, to our student body. Second, how can we reduce our racist ways? Sadly, we know that stereotypes and the racism that follows are inherently difficult to undo. But one proven approach that gives me hope is the idea of equal status contact in the pursuit of shared goals. This means that people from diverse backgrounds come together to work on an equal playing field towards solving a common problem. I suggest that Chappaqua School District find a partner school district that is of diverse background, identify a problem that they share together and work on that goal together. I don't pretend-
Catherine, Catherine, your time is up. If you could please finish because you're running short. Thank you so much.
Yes. I don't pretend to have all the answers, but I think research can help us. As the governing body of our school system, it is your responsibility to lean into the pain of our racist system and lead us on this long journey out of it. As citizens of this community, it is our responsibility to examine ourselves and families and to vote. The gravity of this moral moment must not be squandered. Let's get to work.
Thank you. Thank you Catherine. We appreciate your comments. Eugene Song? Eugene Song? Okay, we might have to come back to Eugene. My apologies. Can we move over to Kristen Browdy, please? Oh wait, there's Eugene, hold on.
Hi, sorry about that.
That's okay, I'm glad we got you in here. So go ahead, just state your name and go ahead. Thank you.
Sure, my name is Eugene Song. I'm a resident of Chappaqua and I have two little girls, one of whom is, is already in the, in the school district and one who will be soon. I wanted to take a cue from Gavri actually and, and focus on actions. There's a lot that I can say about what's going on, but I, I really wanted to focus on what can actually be done here. One quick thing to the non-Black parents on this call, please take this opportunity to talk to your kids about racism and keep talking to them about it. Talk to them about how they're, about their prejudices and their fears. Talk, admit to them that you probably have some learning to do as well. And most importantly, please teach them how to talk to other kids when, not if, they overhear or observe racist incidents. To that, for the school board and the, and the administration on the call, please help facilitate these conversations for parents. Now more than ever in a post-COVID distance learning world, the lines between home and school education are being blurred. And the, the district is in a prime position to help here. Two other quick points. One, I would just ask that any sort of plan that is outlined going forward, I love the idea that, that, that faculty will, will benefit from, from further professional development around this. I would ask and I would hope that the administration would also be included in this as well. I think both parties equally need, need to benefit from that kind of education and that opportunity for growth. And secondly, I think most importantly, for any sort of action plan that comes out of this conversation, I think we all need to know and think real hard about what does success look like? How are we going to measure ourselves? How are you all going to measure yourselves? In terms of success, a month from now, six months from now, a year from now, five years from now? In my professional experience, and I've seen this again and again, we talk about big plans, we talk about aspirational missions, we implement fancy operational plans. But if you can't talk about how that success is supposed to go, how, how define that success from the beginning, there's no real way to know whether any of that was effective or not. The metrics can't be the number of complaints from, from parents or students and alumni. It's got to be something more robust, something more exact. So listen, Chappaqua is supposed to be one of the best school districts in the country. By comparison to the majority of the country, we have every resource, we have every advantage, we have every privilege. Or another way to look at it is that we have no excuse. We must do better. And we all need to see that, you know, not only how that's going to happen, but we will have to know later whether or not we've been successful. Thank you.
Thanks so much Eugene. And my apologies, I had people out of order. My cursor was stuck, so Kristen Browdy is a few people down. We will get to Kristen. The next person to be moved over is Melissa, Melissa Centron. Thank you.
Yes, good evening.
Yes, hi, can you, yes, you can state your name and, and your relationship to our community. Thank you so much.
Yes, hi, I'm Eric Centron. I'm the husband of Melissa. She's actually putting the kids to bed, so I'll speak on both of our behalfs.
Thank you.
So, um, I originally didn't plan on saying anything and I actually got onto this call a bit late, but I was very compelled to just contribute to what I've heard. A lot of this is going to be repetitive, so I'm not going to continuously go on and on and on. But, um, just a little background, I have two children and an elementary and I've lived in Chappaqua for about eleven years now. And this has been a really troubling time for myself and for my family. And, um, very difficult time because I didn't grow up here. I mean, I grew up in the Bronx. I moved to Westchester about twenty years ago and I came to Chappaqua for the, for what I thought would be a greater and better education for my children. The one that I couldn't get for myself. And I worked very hard to come up, come up here. And I've seen racism from the time I've been here. And hearing it in the school is very disheartening. It's something that is, in full honesty, has made me second guess, did I make the right move? Did I make the right move to come to this community? And that's just so troubling. I mean, I love my neighbors, I love the friends that I have here, but it's just very disheartening to hear what has happened. And also the, the, what I would call, to be honest, what I consider the cover-up. This community isn't, they're totally into cover-up. I've been here for eleven years and whether it's a school or not, the school and other issues, the, the cover-up is constantly there to keep the pristine reputation of this community. They consistently cover things up. And I won't go into details on what many of these things are, but I've seen it firsthand and it's embarrassing and it's shameful that, that we've gotten to this, to this position. I just hope that this is not all talk, that action really happens moving forward for all of our children. And it goes beyond just words, it really goes to action. And I'll be so bold to say it's going to require education, but beyond education, also it has to require some kind of consequence and real consequence in order to make change. So I just hope that this will continue in the right direction. I'm going to be hopeful because I haven't planned to move yet. I have my kids here. And, um, and that's really all I wanted to contribute for, for the evening. And thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you so much for speaking tonight. We appreciate it. Our next person is Erica Graves. Okay, let's see if we can get Erica Graves on here. Erica, you still with us? Let's give it another second. Here she comes, okay. Hi Erica, we see you, but I don't hear you yet.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead and state your name and go forward. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Hi, my name is Erica Graves. I, me and my family have been in the Chappaqua School District my entire life. Moved to Chappaqua when I was four, went to nursery school, elementary, middle, high school. Graduated in the class of 2008. So I'm here as a deeply disappointed and hurt Black alumni and really frustrated and angry. But I'm going to save my anger for what's going out on in the world. People are dying. But I'm going to channel my feelings into, into this meeting. And specifically, I really want to focus on the, just generally, the response from the Chappaqua School District. Number one, the response to the incident of the student saying nigger in the, in, on video in your cafeteria. And I'm going to say it out loud to make everyone uncomfortable because can you, if that makes you uncomfortable, imagine how it makes a, a Black person feel at this school. And the fact that, that was met with this equal, a suspension equal to that of a minor violation is truly, truly deplorable. And so my question to you all, and I posed this in my email, is are the lives of the Black, are, are lives of Black people considered to be minor to you? Think about that. I'm sure in your head you're like, of course not, of course not. Well, your current actions and response confirm that you think that Black lives don't matter. Why? Because of that type, if there is no, if no one is held accountable and you're neglecting to adequately address these problematic and very racist behaviors, you're reinforcing this notion that these white privileged kids do not need to be held accountable. You are contributing to the problem. Okay? And I've read this, your responses to, to the student body. I've, I've seen your other responses, but my questions are this, very, very, very clearly. What are you going to do to ensure that all students, especially Black students, feel safe, valued and respected? What are you going to do to educate your white students on the effects of systemic racism has had on Black people in this country? And there have been some brilliant students that have had amazing ideas here. So I hope you all are taking notes. Number three, what are you going to do to ensure that you are developing the next generation of students to be culturally aware citizens that understand the world outside of this privileged bubble? And then finally, I've heard so many stories, right? I've had the opportunity to connect with many Black alumni over, over this time. What are you going to do so that another Black student that comes through the Chappaqua School District does not feel compelled to harm themselves? Because many, many students have felt threatened, have felt not heard, seen, and have felt the need to harm themselves because of your lack of the ability to protect them. That is your job. Your job to protect the students. And they feel unheard and unvalued. So I took a look at, you know, your response and what you're going to do. There is four or five bullet points here. And to be quite honest, they're mediocre at best. There is no-
Erica, can we just ask you to finish up because your, your time's over? Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, my last thought is this. The things that you've outlined here are mediocre at best. There is nothing to actually measure how you are going to measure success here. So have some quantifiable goals, okay? What does it look like? How many Black teachers are you going to hire? What does that look like? And be transparent with everybody. This is mediocre. You need to do better and take an actual active anti-racist stance. And you need to come out and say Black lives matter. Say it. Apologize that you didn't act. Take a stand. Be on the right side of history. Be on the right side of history.
Thanks so much Erica, we appreciate it. Joshua Hemmert?
Hi.
Okay, we can see you, so please state your name and go ahead. Thanks so much.
Great, thanks for the time. My name is Joshua Hemmert. My wife is Black. We are a mixed-race couple here in town. We moved here in 2012 and I just want to say a couple of things in terms of kind of walking a little bit around my house. So one of the first experiences when we were here was being at the mailbox and one of our neighbors asking us, you know, oh, so you're, you're twenty-nine, you know, getting to know each other, you know, twenty-nine years old, you don't have kids, why did you move to Chappaqua? And I think he meant it jokingly. I didn't take any offense to it by any means, but, um, yeah, I think we want the same thing that everybody else wants, right? We want to start our, start our lives together. We want to raise a family together if we're blessed to have kids. And we had a, a tough time having kids. In 2015, we were lucky enough to have our first child. Today, we have three kids. All three of them, I, I find this incredibly ironic. All three of them were born here at home. The first was an unplanned home birth. So we had two officers from town here at our house and in my kitchen, in our kitchen that night. Had a beer with, with both of those officers congratulating us for the birth of our first child. You know, going to town hall to get birth certificates, they've told us each time that they have to go through the process and remember exactly how to have that, that, that take effect. Which just means that if you look at the, the birth records here for town, it's, it's, you know, three of the most recent kids that have been born are mixed-race for such a lack of diversity in this town itself. You know, when I look around our deck, I see an easel that's sitting over here to the right, where the kids paint. Behind me, I see where they paint unfortunately, instead of that easel on, at times, on the railing of our deck. You know, elsewhere on this deck, I see a table and I, I'm pretty sure that that table is where we're going to be telling our oldest daughter that's turning five years old, just turned five years old, that she won't be going to Grafflin this next year. What I've heard, what my wife has heard, is deeply troubling to us. I wish I had more of a hopeful takeaway from it, but I don't. I think there is a tremendous amount that needs to be done. And you know, I, I grew up in Midwest. My mom always said, walk with purpose. And it was just as much about how you walked as what the outcome was. I just, I, I hope, I hope you walk in the right way. I wish you luck. This is, uh, it's, it's unfortunate that this is the conversation that we're having, but I appreciate the time and, uh, thank you.
Thank you Joshua. Philip Severding? My apologies if I'm mispronouncing that.
Hi.
Hi, state your name and go ahead.
My name is Philip Severding. I am a mixed-race Hoppa Chinese-American alumni from Horace Greeley High School, class of 2010. First off, with everything that's being said, I am not surprised. What we are discussing is not an isolated incident. It is one that is documented and one that has tangible proof that racism still exists in our schools. And Christine Ackerman, why haven't you responded personally to all of your Black and non-Black POC who have reached out to you personally? They are still waiting and you still have a lot of work to do. And don't think that this Zoom call counts because you're sitting back right now and this doesn't count towards what you personally have done to dismantle racism. But our school district, one that I call my own, one that my parents continue to pay tax money towards, is afraid of race. We have a history of bastardizing representation in this community as elementary school kids during an immigration simulation and have continued to hide all of the injustices to our POC students. Our education system has failed here in Chappaqua. We do not teach enough about the injustices to Black lives, let in, let alone any race other than colonialist white folk. For example, as a Chinese-American student who went through those hallways, I never learned about the Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882. Why is that? Why is that? Not only is our system as a nation flawed, but our school system, our curriculum, our thinking is flawed. And from what it sounds like, our district isn't ready to make apologies towards our non-white community members. You are prepared to educate your, are you prepared to educate your students in a progressive, intersectional matter that attacks racial matters head-on? Because I don't think you are. Simply because you're not equipped? You don't know how, you don't, you need to hire teachers who are prepared to dismantle racism in the classroom, who are prepared to console POC students about their mental health and their racial trauma that I've experienced on my own in your school, who are prepared to educate the future leaders? And does a two-day suspension for racially charged hate crimes sound like our district is prepared? I'll just say what will stick with me from this town hall meeting are the impactful comments from our black alumni, from our POC alumni, and only that. And to those people, I hear you. To everyone white who is watching this, and that includes you, board members who are white, check yourself, check your privilege, check your microaggressions. This movement requires your aggressive cooperation to undo your own understanding of racial equality and what equality actually looks like. And the first step to that is silence and listening. Listen to your black students and alumni. Listen to what their idea of fair punishment looks like. The control is in your hands, which is the scary part. So please, I beg of you, be careful and protect your students.
Thank you for your thoughts, we appreciate it. Next is William Fahey. Hi, go ahead, can you state your name and your community relationship? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Fahey. I have lived in Chappaqua for 25 years and have children in the classes of 2008, 2011, and 2021 in Chappaqua schools. I know that I have good friends who are holding back to allow blacks and people of color and students to speak. And I agree, this should be their space, but I'm angry. And I also want them to feel supported. Firstly, thank you to the students, alums, and fellow members of Chappaqua who have spoken so passionately. You have reinforced my belief in the good here. Secondly, to the board and our superintendent, thank you for your service to our school district. I believe you all come at this from a good place, good hearts, and best intentions. I don't underestimate your commitment nor the responsibility in the sleepless nights that springs. However, your lack of transparency and communication operate in sharp contrast to your intentions. Your lack of transparency and communication shroud and cloak such vile behavior as was exhibited by the five students in the now-public video. And in so doing, you validate their behavior. As a parent and a community member, I want to know of such impactful events as much as I want to know to Christine's comments about the scrawled Nazi graffiti in school restrooms by unknown actors because it impacts my children and because I am part of this community. And I want this community to fiercely speak out against wrong and reinforce our values. Finally, your lack of transparency and communication preclude accountability, and that's important as well. Our students deserve to know that they are safe in our schools and supported. Our students of colors and others with differences deserve to be protected, uplifted, and validated. Similarly, the students who espouse good personal principles against racism, bigotry, and discrimination also need to see their principles validated by the adults in their lives, including our school administrators and educators, second only to their parents or guardians. Our students are growing their characters as much as their minds. The definition of justice includes the upholding of truth, reason, and fairness. Our kids deserve a just environment. As our American society seeks to end police brutality by ensuring that a minimum proper selection, training, protocols, and punishments, similarly, our students deserve to see such reprehensible behavior prevented via education and training, guardrails by clear protocols with appropriate consequences. My ask, specific actions to drive improved inclusivity for all students, a revision of our feeble code of conduct to add specificity and consequences, written protocols requiring the inclusion of a qualified person of color in every single interview process with specific accountability and reporting to the district residents.
Jennifer, your three minutes are up, so if you could, if you could finish up, that would be great.
Thank you.
Oh, you're done. Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Next is AV. Hi, we have a visual, but you're not fully on video, so I'm hoping that you can connect with us.
Can you see me now?
Nope, I can hear you, but we, we don't have your video on. We cannot see you. Wait.
Here we go.
Well, it's extremely dark. We see sort of a black screen. Is there a way to get more light on you? Is that possible? Ah, there we go.
There we go.
Thank you very much. So if you could state your name and go ahead, we appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Aria Levinett, class of 2005. Thank you for letting me speak. When Eric Garner was murdered by police in 2014, what did the board do as far as discussing how to address that issue to the student body at Greeley, Bell, Seven Bridges, West Orchard, Grafflin, and Roan Brook? When the school's grounds got updated with new turf fields in multiple locations, newly renovated gymnasiums and weight rooms, new ballards lining the walkway from the senior parking lot, and this behavior happens? Why? Priorities. How much money has the school board put into inviting Black Lives Matter spokespeople to come in and speak in front of the entire class for assemblies at Greeley, Bell School, Seven Bridges, Grafflin, Roan Brook, and West Orchard? Ask yourselves, what could have been done better? When black parents have to debate whether or not they want to move into Newcastle because they know about the systemic racism in our town? That is a problem. Prioritize funding. Prioritize education on the most important issues in our country. How many other racist incidents occurred in Newcastle that were never told to parents? Punishment. Write two 10-page papers. One about the history of racism in America, so you learn about it. Write another one about the history of rioting and protest in America. It's important. If you all haven't seen the movie Bad Education, you should, because it sheds light on the extent which school boards will go to maintain their appearance in the public eye. How privileged are you to be able to dismiss addressing the punishment of these children again? As opposed to the black students and black alumnae of Greeley that will still have to figure out how to navigate their way and their children through this racist world? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Kristen Browdy. Hi Kristen, we can see you and hear you. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm Kristen Browdy. I've been a member, I've lived here in Chappaqua for a little over 16 years. I have two sons, one of whom is out of the system and one who is a rising junior at Greeley. And I'm a former member of, or original member of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee of the town of Newcastle. And you've heard from other committee members who talked about what happened a few years back when we went down, a committee, a subcommittee went down to Seven Bridges to deal with a very similar, though not caught-on-video incident, and how really nothing happened about that. I will try to address the many absolutely spot-on comments made by so many more qualified than I, but what I do want to say is that there was no publicity back then as there was no publicity this time. And I want to urge the board, to the extent that it feels that privacy legislation governing the conduct of school boards and governing the conduct of school boards in relation to students may have limited you in what you can tell the community. This is a environment in which the state legislature is taking steps as we speak. Today, they've passed several bills dealing with police brutality, dealing with releasing records that were previously confidential. If you think you're held back in the ways you deal with students, deal with publicizing incidents involving students, or dealing with the discipline of students, I would urge you to now say what those regulations are. And I guarantee you that there is an audience of people who are very willing to step up and make sure that the changes take place so that if there are, or more likely, unfortunately, when there are future incidents, the board and the school administrators are in a better position to make public exactly what's going on so that we as a community can more effectively deal with it. Because that's the only way we're gonna get change. Thank you.
Thank you so much Kristen. We have Sharad Kumar, again. Apologies if I'm mispronouncing your first name.
Hello.
Hi, you can go ahead.
Thank you. I'm a 2019 graduate of Horace Greeley High School. I'm now a member of the 2023 class at Princeton University. I have to say, when I saw that video that's now circulating online, I was downright disgusted. I was repulsed. I was sickened. But to be brutally honest with you, I was not surprised. I think as a person of color in the Chappaqua School District, I've been the victim of multiple incidents that have been racist. I've been told that my skin is like poop because I'm brown. That why would someone have my skin like this, like poop? And what was incredible to me was with all those incidents, none of them garnered any attention of the administration. And I have to ask you, are you okay with that? Is that what you guys stand for? Because for me, it was not okay. I'm upset, I'm angry. I think that's an understatement. I think we're all like that. My heart goes out to my, the fellow people in my class that are black, that actually are having their lives threatened. And I'm enraged that so many people in this community have come to the support of those children in that video. And I have to wonder why that's happening. And I think that a lot of people are saying that it was not so bad what those children did. But yes, there is a problem in this town of systemic and pervasive racism. My question to you is, what are you going to do to address it? So many times, I think the Chappaqua schools have had an option for change, and they've brushed over it. They've made cursory, quick changes that have really had no impact on the student experience. They've made changes that make themselves look good to people that come and visit the schools, but don't impact the very students that are in those schools. I'm calling you to do many things. I'm calling on you to revise the code of conduct, to have racist incidents go on transcripts, to hold people accountable for their actions, and, and most importantly, that you guys hold yourself accountable for the culture in the school, to wholly reform the curriculum. But my question to you is, how do we know this time will be any different? How do we know you won't just make a few quick changes and say, it's all okay, when it's really not, until this happens again? My sister's soon gonna enter high school, and I really, really hope that things have changed by the time she dies and that she doesn't have to go through the same sort of stuff that I did. Thank you.
Sharad, thank you for your perspective, we appreciate it. Selena Shen?
Hello, can you see any of us?
We can, so please state your name and go forward.
Hi, I'm Selena Shen. I am a Greeley graduate from the class of 2014. I have already emailed all of the board and principal about my feelings about this, which I share with everybody else that has already spoken. Just want to make a few quick points. Number one, I agree that the consequences must be made clear. And I think that parents are one aspect of this that has not been really talked about. Ms. Fahey made a point about some of the parents in the community who are equally troubled by this, and I completely understand that. But I want to see them do more. And I'm very, very concerned frankly that parents in this community feel that they have sway, undue sway over what happens and have somehow hamstrung the administration into taking action better, strictly just not enough. So I just want to make sure that I make that very clear. These consequences, if parents aren't aware of them, if students aren't aware of them, then nothing is going to change. No one is going to care. It will all be swept under the rug and all your work will be for naught. I'm gonna hand over to my sister, who graduated 10 years after me from Greeley.
Hi, I'm-
Okay, thank you.
Class of 2017. I just wanted to add on a similar point about how we need to be more transparent about how you're gonna deal with these things. I know that there are privacy regulations and all that, but we can still find a way for us to understand how you're going to deal with this and how you're gonna ensure people get more educated about what they did wrong and why was wrong for the future and so that we can ensure no one else has to deal with these feelings of being all that they've, all this racism. It's just been so sad and frustrating. But yes, I really hope that we can make change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you to both of you, very much. Zain Reimer?
Hello.
Hi Zain, we can see you, so state your name and go ahead. Thank you.
Zain Reimer, I'm a senior at Horace Greeley High School. So I came into this town in the eighth grade from Brooklyn, New York. It's a diverse community. I have a unique perspective when I see what this town may be lacking. When you're raised in a bubble, which Chappaqua is, to be quite frank, you are shaped by the lack of information. You are shaped by the things that you, that aren't said to you, the things that aren't taught, the things that you don't see. It's easy for white boys and girls in our town to throw around the N-word so casually, with ease, because they have never seen the struggles that people of color in the African-American community have gone through. They do not understand what systemic racism is. I have a problem that we are raising a future generation that will go on and be successful, but will bring their ignorance, prejudice, and white privilege outside of this bubble into the world. They will eventually leave this bubble and they will take their ignorance and unleash it on the world. When they're teachers, lawyers, CEOs, judges, HR heads, they will bring what was fostered here and it will be leaked out like the virus it is. Yes, they are teenagers, yes, they are kids, but one day, they will not be. And we have to be ready to accept our responsibility for how we shaped them and how we didn't shape them. The fact that the only teacher of color I've had, my guidance counselor, has had the most profound impact on me proves the importance of exposing Chappaqua kids to people, places, and things not like them. I was fortunate to grow up in a diverse place and my family being half Pakistani. When we succeed, this town succeeds. Horace Greeley in this town takes the credit for our success. When we fail, it is a reflection of this town. The actions of these teenagers is a reflection of this town's ignorance. We will be having this conversation five years from now, 10 years from now, unless we make the change now. Ms. Ackerman, I would ask of you to please step up. Be the leader that your job asks you to be and the leader this town needs. Step up. And like Ms. Erica Graves said before, that really gets the point across. Be on the right side of history. Do you want us to tell our kids and then their kids that you all failed as leaders and made this town worse and worse? Or that you helped us bring change, meaningful, permanent change? Thank you.
Thank you Zain, we appreciate it. Leah Dents?
Hi.
Hi Leah, you can go ahead, state your name and go ahead.
Hi, I'm Leah Dents. I graduated in 2018 and my mom is currently a special ed teacher at Bell. I'm gonna quickly start by telling a story that's pretty indicative of the administration and how it fails to hold people accountable. I heard through the grapevine a couple of years ago that Shroff was working at a new restaurant in town. So I myself went to the restaurant to see if that was true. And there was the man who sexually abused countless students at Greeley making alcoholic drinks for people in the area. I had to inform the manager about his criminal background and it turns out that he was working there under a fake name in order to be employed. He was immediately fired after I, a student, 16-years-old, exposed him. And sadly, the principal at the time was not someone I could trust to go do with this information. Why no one kept an eye on where he was, I have no idea. And why he was allowed to be employed five minutes away from school months after being charged is a great question. And why did I, a 16-year-old girl, need to deal with this issue? It's because- And why did I, a 16-year-old girl, need to deal with this issue? It's because no one in the administration would do so themselves. You guys are very, very lucky that the parents of a survivor of his assault didn't walk into that restaurant. And as for this particular case, please do not think that the solution to this is making racism the focus of guidance groups and having a special bell schedule for kids to, to help this situation. I hope you all know that towns surrounding us are laughing at us right now and it's embarrassing. And it's embarrassing that we can only rely on people like Perez Hilton to actually give, give these, give people a platform because that administration won't hold kids accountable. Clearly you guys are outraged because it finally impacts your reputation rather than how other students are feeling, but it's the only time this administration actually cares. And I believe that this honestly all starts from the top and at this moment in time, while I'm not a student anymore in this town, I believe that the leadership is missing the mark and the kids deserve so much better. There are kids who are clearly hurting right now and for you to emphasize how those who actually perform the racist act are probably feeling is disgusting, but not surprising. And I hope that either you guys step up or step down because this is absolutely ridiculous. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Leah. Felicia? Or Felicia, I'm sorry.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, and now we can see you. So if you could state your name and go ahead, that would be great. Thanks.
Yes, my name is Felicia Ashley. I graduated with the class of 2012 and I'm currently a reporter with an MEC affiliate as well. Um, the reason why I want to participate in this chat is one, it is extremely important to me and also multiple current students at Horace Greeley reached out to me, not just for help, but just for advice as well. Many of them reached out and told me that they were called the N-word on the bus in the cafeteria in school. And the first thing I thought was I know because it happened to me too. My first instance was in first grade, then an instance with a teacher in second grade, and countless situations of racism throughout middle school, high school, from people pulling on my natural hair to Facebook groups talking about hanging me in my backyard. In all instances, it was hap, it was handled by my mom and I and my family and the administration did nothing. I also wanted to add that I can tell you those students in the video and their actions, as well as the lack of discipline by the district is why the country and the world is in the current state that it is now. It was not a simple mistake that those students made their video. That video took time, it took effort, it took time and effort for that girl to paint her face and then to continue making racist posts after that. You may not be able to control what happens inside of those students' homes. Clearly, by what they felt comfortable to share, it shows what's going on in their homes. I understand the district may not be able to control what happens in their homes, but the second those students and other students step on um the property, Horace Greeley's property or the school district's property, they are your responsibility. It is your responsibility not just to protect students of color, but all students. Those videos were threats. Saying the N-word is not a threat. That is not a greeting, is not anything of comforts, is not anything of love. That word was used to hang people and to kill people and those students knew what they were doing. Horace Greeley breeds Ivy League students. It breeds CEOs, it breeds students. By you all not disciplining those students efficiently, it is now saying that you guys are also breeding racists and that is not okay. The video shows what their parents are teaching them and what's being said in their homes. And if you cannot handle what is going on in their homes, clearly conversation also needs to be had with parents as well when they're sending their students to your schools. Chappewa schools is known for being the best and you also have to be known for breeding human beings as well. You're not just doing a disservice to all the students while they're in your schools, when they go on into society. Cause as you can all see now, no one is taking a stand for this nonsense anymore. People are losing their jobs. They're getting kicked off their own boards, getting kicked out of their homes for being racist because it is no, people are starting to realize is no longer okay. Chappewa schools need more than just a month to learn about black history and they need to learn more than just that blacks were once slaves. They need to learn, especially those students in those videos, that the world, America would not exist. The inventions, the White House legislation rules would not exist without African-Americans and black Americans. We need more students, we need more, excuse me, staff and teachers of color. It has been shown with research and statistics that diversity, not just in the schools with the students, but also with administrators, plays a huge role in the development of students. Chappewa is one of the best schools, not just in the nation and in the state, in the country as well. They should know by now the impacts of these things. It's just not acceptable and it can't go on any longer and action needs to be shown. What those students did is a threat. And how are students of color and all-
Felicia, your time is up. Can you, do you think you can wrap up? Cause your three minutes are up. So if you could finish up, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
The last word I would say is I personally would not feel comfortable sending my children to school with students like that in that video. Something needs to be done so everyone feels safe sitting in their classroom. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Liam Curtis.
Hi, my name is Liam Curtis and I graduated with the class of 2019. Last fall, as, as I was applying to college, I decided to pick up a copy of the Horace Greeley Tribune. On the front page of the paper I read, quote, initially drafted and enacted by the Obama administration, affirmative action policies require colleges to consider race as a factor when selecting and evaluating students from a pool of applicants. Though it may seem counterintuitive, underrepresented minorities are placed on, at an advantage, sometimes having lower requirements than other ethnicity groups. End quote, affirmative action discriminates against minorities. In an official school publication that was read over by several writers, editors and a faculty advisor, another student at my school was promoting inaccurate facts to promote a racist agenda and target the few students of color at Greeley. Later in the year, only several days after receiving and accepting my admission to Yale University, I go to wash my hands in the bathroom and I look in the mirror and read the N-word three times. Three minutes later, I had an AP calculus exam. It was impossible to focus on integrals when I was trying to rationalize why someone would hurl racial slurs at me. In response to both of these incidents, the administration proposed Band-Aid solutions such as a condemnation email to the community and Unity Day. I'm very grateful for my education opportunities granted by the Chappewa Central School District, but also I often felt that administrators failed to protect students of color from racism and intolerance, leaving us to suffer racial grievances alone. It seemed as though the administration sought to protect the futures of racist students rather than protecting the students affected most by such hatred. I urge you board members to consider structural and cultural changes to the district which would improve the racial climate and dismantle racist idea. I would like you to hire more faculty of color, implement mandatory bias and sensitivity training and teach race and ethnicity starting from elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Liam. Christopher Leon.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, go right ahead. State your name and go ahead.
Um, Christopher Leon, I am a senior at Horace Greeley High School. I came from Fox Lane High School, uh, my junior year, I entered Horace Greeley. And I would like to say that personally, I have, I do have an experience with racism at Horace Greeley. Throughout the entire junior year, since I wasn't a part of growing up with these students, it's very hard to integrate myself with these groups and to make friends. But what I've learned is sharing one common thing with people really brings people together. For example, I joined the football team. I've never experienced more love than the football team. I love, like, they've never really, they never let me, they've always been with me the whole time. And I think that what we should do, and like I said, like Unity Day, I think we should do more, not more Unity Day, we should have more programs that implement people working together. Because when you work together, you, for me, I mean, I can't speak for everyone, but for myself is we all, we all help each other and I think that that's one thing that will help everyone. And also I would like to say that I don't want to be like, sound like a broken record because I, I agree with everyone with what they said. We do need more um, a diverse administration and teachers. But I would like just to thank everyone um because they've helped me tremendously and I don't think that administration has ever treated me differently. I think they've treated me a lot better. Cause I, I, at Fox Lane, I definitely, I think this is beyond Horace Greeley, this is definitely a Westchester thing. I've definitely experienced a lot of, a lot of racism at Fox Lane. People look at me and they, they put standards on me. And going to Greeley, um, it, it changed a little bit. Also, I'd like to add that um, there are definitely some people that, like what, what people have said, when it all starts at a young age, I don't think, you can't rely on parents to teach kids because parents do say, um, you have to accept everyone, but it's more or less about who you hang around with and nowadays it's on social media, what you see on social media. It has to be definitely from the bottom up because when you, when you're a kid, it's all, all you, all you know is it, what people around you are saying. That's all you know. So when your teachers, when you have a diverse teachers, um, and what's it called? Sorry, I'm just blanking. When you have a, a diverse set of teachers that are telling you one thing, you, you learn, that's what you know. And that's, I, that's what I think needs to happen in order to, to have more acceptance at Horace Greeley. I don't think that, listen, you could have as many assemblies as you want, but if it happens in the moment, students forget about it. It's, that's just how, students will forget about it.
Thanks, Christopher. Your time is up. Are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I just wanted to say.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us.
Thank you.
Um, Stephen Pierce.
Hi, do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you and see you. So go ahead, Stephen.
Yes, alright. I had to switch to my phone and I also don't want to take too much time. But the first thing, I'm Stephen Pierce, sorry, I'm a class of 2020, graduating in a few weeks. The first thing I want to address was just the censorship of, and not really so much of time restraint. I think it's more so that we are not allowing especially people of color and black students to share their experiences at the school. And I think telling them that they only have three minutes to do so is kind of ridiculous. I understand that we have time limits and we, everyone is super busy, has things to run through, but given how outraged the school is right now, I think it is very unfair. Especially with already the minimal representation that students of color are getting in this district to give them this opportunity and say that we're listening and then giving them three minutes to talk about for some of them 13 years of racism that they've experienced at the school is ridiculous. But anyway, I'll, again, do not want to take up more time. The other thing I would like to address is how during my 13 years here, I do not think I ever had a black teacher, as many people I know have already mentioned. But conversations I've had with my friends and my family just about the environment here and how students are going from living in a neighborhood like Chappewa, which is primarily white, uh, primarily wealthy families making lots of money. I think when they end up going to these private schools and these private colleges with kids who look and talk just like them, it is the administration's responsibility to make sure that the students feel safe and comfortable here. And when many, many, many people of color, especially former black students that went to Greeley have come forward and talked about how uncomfortable and the racism that they endured during their school and to tell, tell them that you are listening and only to give them time like this is really inexcusable. And I don't know, when are we meeting? Tomorrow.
Thank you, Stephen. Um, Stephen Thompson is next.
Hello, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can. Go ahead and state your name and uh, and go ahead. Thank you.
Thanks, sorry. Stephen Thompson is my husband. My name is Danielle Thompson. Um, I survived the Chappewa School District. I graduated in the year 2006. Um, I'm on this call because I was also deeply disturbed and horrified. Um, I moved to Chappewa from the island of Jamaica and um, it was a rude awakening for me. Um, being the, one of very few black kids in that, in that school, starting at Bell and ending at Horace Greeley was just really hard. Um, and I've always struggled after leaving Greeley with people saying, oh, you must have been so happy, you went to such a good school. And I generally just didn't know how to respond. Because yes, while the resources are there, the encouragement, I never felt celebrated. I always felt ostracized. I always felt something was different and it's hard to hear that even years later, even years prior, this has always been an issue. Right? And so did my question to the board is what's going to change? Okay, fine. You'll want to hire diverse teachers, diverse staff. But what administrator, what teacher of color is going to want to come to a school district where they haven't shown that when students act in this manner, that dire, tire, just getting rid of them is not even an option. Right? I have a daughter now. She's two. She's going to be three. And I've struggled even living in New York City about where do I send her to school? I've had people say, hey, why don't you just go back to Chappewa? Why don't you go back to Westchester? And even hearing this now, it's just very hard to even consider that. And so I really do urge the board, I urge the students, I urge the parents to think about this. Because if you do want to create that change, if you do want to continue to provide a, a, a world-class education, you need to be able to balance that and it's important. Because students are going through this district who do not feel celebrated. I, I, I'm very thankful that I didn't have my foundation in Chappewa. I'm glad I had a foundation in my early childhood where I was celebrated, was encouraged, where I was, just felt that I could do anything. Because I think that gave me the strength to get through that. And so I hope that these dire consequences for these students and these horrendous acts are taken, so that real change can occur. Thank you.
Danielle, thank you very much. Um, next is Victoria Alzapiere. Hi Victoria, we can't see your video or hear you at this point.
Okay, can you hear me?
Uh, we can hear you. Can you turn your video on?
Not sure why it's not coming on. Let's see, hold on. Uh, okay, I got it.
Okay.
Hopefully it'll undo soon. I'm trying.
Alright, we'll give you a second.
I wonder why it's not turning.
Victor, if you want to try and log out and log back in, we can take the next person and-
Oh, here we go. I got it.
Okay. Oh, we got you. Good. Thank you so much. I'm glad we could see you. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so I have to say, you know, this has been, well, first of all, Victoria Alzapiere, I'm a resident of Newcastle. Uh, I've lived here for 12 years and um, this has been, you know, probably the most distressing few days of living here, um, hearing all of the uh, racial issues coming out. Um, I'm a former civil rights lawyer, uh, education discrimination lawyer, doing a lot of work with students in middle school and high schools over the years. And um, it's been very painful to hear the stories that the students are sharing, but actually I feel more proud to be a resident of Newcastle at the moment than I've ever felt. Just knowing that the students of color and other students and alumni of color and other students of color here have felt brave enough to share their experiences um, in the school system. Um, I wasn't really aware until hearing the pattern of uh, all the experiences shared this evening that there really is um, a racially hostile environment here in our school system and um, it's very painful to realize that. And as someone who's been an activist and worked on uh, racial justice and social justice issues, um, I feel compelled to um, really encourage our school system to, number one, rethink how you're including uh, people in the conversation. A few folks have said this format, this three minutes of one-way conversation, um, while it does give you a chance to hear, it doesn't um, humanize the experience of being able to have a back and forth conversation uh, to delve deeper into what uh, the students and alumni are sharing with us. And I really think we need to have more of a, a intentional, comprehensive dialogue throughout our community about this issue. This, instead of a school board meeting, I think we really need to have a community forum that the school is leading, that our, you know, our town is leading, that our community leaders are leading and that students have and alumni have a critical voice in. Um, the work that I've done around diversity issues, um, I've- Um, the work that I've done around diversity issues, um, I've created diversity and inclusion programs for companies and work in school systems. It's so important to have students' voice and the alumni voice. And we have students and alumni who are brave enough to share their experiences with us. We need to fully embrace that as a gift. Um, this one-time communication is wonderful. Um, somehow we immediately need to figure out a way to keep them engaged with us, uh, to keep learning what they felt, um, how it impacted them and what their suggestions are strategically, policy-wise, curriculum-wise, a lot of the suggestions they've talked about tonight. We need to build on that. I mean, someone had said, create a committee, you know, we need to have, I think I've said this to the board in the past, youth-led, youth-informed leadership, um, having a student on the board, uh, on the school board on leadership committees, really helping to find solutions. I think we really need to have that happen immediately to keep the engagement of folks who have been here tonight and who are participating on Facebook pages. We need to hear their wisdom and their voices, uh, and we need to get adults involved. Not only do students need to be educated about history and current oppression and racism and prejudice and, and white privilege, but we need to have their parents involved and adults.
Victoria, Victoria, if you could wrap up, your, your time is up if you, if you wouldn't mind wrapping up for us.
Yeah, the last thing I'd say is this is a safety issue, as people have said before. And it is really critical that everyone be informed of incidents and that we treat this as a public health, as was said earlier, and a safety issue.
Thank you.
Immediately, and the school board budget, which we're about to vote on, maybe it should be amended to include money to work on this issue immediately. And we need a timeline of action that's going to be announced as soon as possible.
Thank you, Victoria. Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, next is DeWard.
Jane, I think you missed someone.
Oh, wait, nope. Hold on. Wait, 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 wait.
We can do.
I'm sorry, um. Mahir. That, okay, that's my, my sidebar didn't move properly, my apologies. So we'll take DeWard and then I will go back to Mahir right after that. Thank you.
Hello, my name.
Hi, DeWard, go right ahead.
And I am a member of the class of twenty twenty. Now, before I give my remarks, I want to point out that while we don't want to scapegoat anyone or focus too much attention on one side of the issue, I think that we as a community need to think a lot hard about what we are willing to enable. It's easy to say that the kids who use these slurs and who put on blackface are just kids, but the reality is, is that it wouldn't be so fair to excuse this behavior so easily when every day, people of color who are minors, primarily African-American and Hispanic students are expected to live as adults in the eyes of the criminal justice system. They have to live every day with such high expectations in life or death situations. It's not too much to ask our student body, where most students live with immense privilege, to hold themselves to a higher standard. I understand that the formal policy of the school is that they cannot retroactively change any punishments. But I encourage the school board to reform their disciplinary policy looking forward. Namely, I would like to point out that the actions taken by these students, according to the board's own statements today, will not be sent, will not be on any transcripts sent to colleges. I think that looking forward, we should possibly change that policy so that students are held more accountable for their actions in, in order to set a stronger deterrence for this behavior. More importantly, by holding these students more accountable, it strongly motivates them to be more introspective and to reflect on how they can change their behavior and make amends for their harmful actions. I'm not perfect myself. I've been wrong many times in the past about my thoughts on race. I still have a lot to learn. I've had friends and family who are good people who've made terrible mistakes. It's okay to be misinformed. It's okay to be wrong. It's okay to make mistakes. What isn't okay is refusing to take accountability for your actions, which hurt other people, and refusing to do something to make up for your mistakes. Because by failing to take action, you're sending a strong message that you don't care and that you don't care about the people who are affected by your actions and words every day. Now, the idea of accountability just doesn't go to the student body, to the teacher's administration, but it goes most importantly to the parents. To the parents who are listening right now, you're responsible too for the behavior of your children. It is on you to make sure your children do not act this way, to teach kindness and tolerance. I know that some of the parents of the children involved with producing this racist content are probably listening to this meeting right now. I would encourage all those parents to take some personal responsibility to apologize for their inability to prevent this and the harm they've done to actually explain to the people what they are doing to hold their children accountable, to heal our community. Instead of so, instead of spending so much time trying to sue to take these videos down, I would encourage the parents to spend more time educating their children and to actually show some genuine remorse. I'd end off with this one tidbit. One parent of a child exposed for using and saying the N-word has not only not apologized in our community, but has actually claimed that the videos and screenshots of their children are not real. Their parent is running for the school board. Her name is DeWard Smith.
We can't talk about that. Thank you very much. We will move on to Mahir Rajwade.
I apologize. Hello?
Hi, Mahir. Uh, okay, we can see you and hear you. So go right ahead. Just state your name and go forward. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mahir Adwade, a current senior at Greeley. I want to express how upset I am at, uh, and the rest of my grade and community is. As the student body president, I would like to express this frustration further. This is because in twelve days, it is our graduation and I'm currently forced to write a speech to deliver to the entire graduating class against the background of an administration which has failed us. No doubt, my speech will be heavily vetted and altered in order to fall in line with the message the administration would like to give out. Here, I would like the, ask, I here, I would like to ask the administration and Ms. Ackerman to let me write directly to the students without pleasing, without the pressure of pleasing and kneeling to the admin during this moment in history. Thank you. In my four years in Horace Greeley High School, I've been, I've read a total of four books by authors of color. Four, all in my English class. In my history class, I've read zero. Stop acting like this is something you never knew about. I've seen white teachers tout hijabs, ask racist Asian, ask Asian students with great certainty to read or speak in Chinese script, as well as use racially charged language under the guise of education. Once, when I wrote an essay on why one of my favorite rappers was a classic character, one of my teachers' only comments was that she hated this man and all rap music in general. Great. On the same day as the special bell schedule, days baptized as evidence of Greeley's growing sensitivity towards cultural movements and ideals, I was called a curry muncher and asked to do someone's math homework for them because I liked it. It's fine for me because this town has taught me that I'm powerless in the face of racism. That the best thing for me to do and my family to do is to laugh it off and use it to better myself or just pretend to totally ignore it. But what I hadn't realized is that these things seeped and festered inside of me. Now I will always feel different. I'll realize that I have to smile and take everything a little less seriously to stop myself breaking down from trash like this. You did this. This is not my fault. This is yours. Your ignorance is not an excuse to feel bad for you or to give you the benefit of the doubt. I gave the school the benefit and its people the benefit of the doubt when one of my classmates told me to F off and go back to the desert on my very first day of high school after moving from the Middle East. What do you want me to do now? Forgive you? I won't, and I don't think any others will be prepared to do that. Greeley last year came up with the first Unity Day. Unity Day was touted to be the savior of racism in my school. However, it was a glorified PSA made to stroke the school's ego after they found the N-word an anti-Semitic language being used to vandalize school property. The videos and images we have seen in this last week are twenty times worse than this type of behavior. And what do we see? The admin silence in the last two hours as well as the prior months is your answer. Would you like to know who spoke at Unity Day? Our white principal, who gave us a story about his white guilt and inability to act in the face of a racist act. Are we serious? I mean, are we really being serious? Mr. Corsilia has been extremely supportive during these times, but the truth is that this wild level of ignorance and inability to understand what the administration's responsibility is baffles me. Wake up. Focus on the mental health and well-being of students of colors. Please, please, please wake up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mahir. Robbie Gottlieb.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead and state your name and go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, Robbie Gottlieb, class two thousand seven. I'm really encouraged by how the community has evolved since I left. Uh, what Gabri Elliott has done is amazing. His work should not be his alone. I stand with the current class president. This scandal is abhorrent. I am so sorry to the black peers in our community who are really hurting right now because as an alum, I am complicit in not doing enough. Adding to what's already been said, there's disturbing subtext and ignorance about the impact of this racist behavior. The idea that the N-word does damage only to the black community, to which it does irreparable traumatic harm. I was taught that racism was bad, but I was never taught that race was a social construct. As white people, it's our responsibility to eradicate racism and we, and we have to remind other white people because it's corrosive to them too. Chapua demographics skew white. Jews are a majority or a very vocal minority. Education around antisemitism was plentiful and important, but that merely checks one of many, many boxes. We are still sorely lacking in curriculum that explains the experience of being black in America, the four hundred years of oppression that got us here, and essential black scientists, thinkers, and artists. It's a lie to say that the tools in the curricula don't exist. The district and administrators have opted not to act radically and not soon enough. In kindergarten, schools are already late to the game. If you're not considering radically intervening as early as you can, why not? Please reconsider how you discipline the students involved. They will be in the community for the next three years and they can be involved in anti-racist restorative justice to those they have hurt. Their parents need to participate in that. Please open the door for them. Consider this incident in a national context. From this call, we know that there are good kids in Chapua. Kids who are already doing the work to repair the world, the flawed world that's hand, that's been handed to them. As we speak, there are current students in every grade who are desperately grasping for the tools that were, that would allow them to process the moment we're living in, just like I am. That the district didn't deliver, or just like I am, sorry, um, shit. Desperately loving, grasping for the tools that would allow them to process the moment that we're living in and have realized they don't have them. I'm heartbroken because I know that they are learning in real time, just like I am, that the district didn't deliver on its promise. I hope they wake up, they woke up today asking why they haven't been practicing these strategies and how they might have hurt other people or themselves. I wish it had happened before. Crucially, there are others who do have the capacity to absorb what's going on, but don't yet. This is gut-wrenching. Though there are very few students for whom even the best efforts of, by parents and teachers will not resonate and will continue to commit hurtful acts, I know that educators and families rightly cannot see it that way, and we should never stop trying. I know that there are extraordinary parents, admin, and teachers who take their responsibilities seriously and have dabbled down on their efforts. You're either trying to shape Chapua students into warriors for social justice or you're failing. If you're not going to be part of that change, respectfully, you need to step aside. Thank you.
Thank you, Robbie. Next is Brunette G.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead and state your name and, and, and go ahead. We can see and hear you.
Hi, my name is Brunette Guerra. I am a Greeley alum and graduated with the class of two thousand nine. Uh, very truthfully, I wasn't prepared to speak today. I came um, really as an ally and to hear, uh, what was being said. But I really kind of was, uh, just pushed forward with everyone's, um, commentary. First, I want to say, um, I stand with all, uh, the black students, alumni, parents and, uh, current students that have spoken, and I'm glad, um, that they're being heard and I, I hear you, I stand with you. Um, I think a lot of people have made eloquent points and have, um, both of, uh, outcry of, outcry of, um, anger and rightfully so and of action steps. But I do want to, um, kind of shed light on, on one thing that hasn't been spoken about too much. While education, uh, being included and diversity and adding faculty is needed, is great. Um, it's, it's really nothing in comparison if we're not tackling what is going on with these kids with their parents. Um, we have already seen the parents involved, and I know that we're not going to get specific here, but it was a running joke when I was there of kids can get away with anything because their parents are going to get lawyers and they're going to sue you. They, these kids are taught from early on that their actions have no consequences because mommy and daddy will throw money at it and take care of the situation. And Greeley is a direct reflection of what's going on in this country of money and people and power will tuck everything away. That's what's happened in Greeley for years. That's what's continuing to happen. So until we really put pressure on this administration to say we cannot stand with these parents anymore, we cannot allow them to dictate how we teach these kids, how we run our system, there's really not going to be much of a difference made with diversifying, with adding curriculum. So we really need to take a look at the parents involved and to say that, you know, the staff doesn't know any better. It's twenty twenty. You guys are on the Board of Education. You've had multiple resources and time and, and privilege to know better. So I think what really needs to be head-on is that this can only keep going. The pressure can only be put on. And as someone said in the beginning, that to hold you accountable and rest assured that we all will. We're all here. We're rallying behind all the people of color and all the minorities in this town, and enough is enough. And I really hope that, um, everyone stands together and continues to really put the pressure on to, to teach these kids a lesson. They're kids, yes, but how many people of, uh, brown and brown kids are treated as adults? Because that's what they're, they're taught to do because their skin. They're said, oh, you need to do better, but white kids can get away with all these things because mom and dad will take care of it. And that's all I had to share. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Joanne Milch is next. Hi, Joanne, we can see your name here, but we don't have your audio and video yet.
Just audio, it's there, no one.
We can, we can hear you, but we can't see you yet.
I, I'm gonna pass, Jane, when I, everything's been said. Thank you.
Okay, you're very welcome. Um, Shivani Arya.
Hi.
Hi, Shivani, go ahead.
Uh, my name is Shivani Arya. I graduated from Greeley in two thousand fifteen. And speaking from personal experience, at Greeley, I've personally, uh, faced racism. I've been called a terrorist. I've been made fun of for being Indian and having Indian name multiple times during my time in the Chapua School System. I recall being called out by teachers in multiple classes when we were learning about India and Hinduism despite not being Hindu. I feel ostracized, I felt ostracized and even more different than I already felt before. I never thought to say anything to anyone, not even my friends, because I thought, what's the point? Who would care? The administration had never made any attempts to educate us on racism, aside from our five-minute lesson about slavery and history in class. And so why would they care about what was said to me? Or anyone else. Uh, these incidences and other microaggressions have not only affected my self-esteem, but they damaged my self-worth as well. Um, I also took part in the senior musical in my senior year. We put on the production of Hair, and I'm ashamed to say that my classmates and I sing the N-word multiple times. And I myself, a light-skinned, non-black person, half-white person, was told to wear an Afro because the school and board chose to approve a play that was unfit for predominantly white student body to perform. In addition, instead of taking the opportunity to educate us about the history of racism and use of the N-word in this country, Horace Greeley High School again failed to educate its students about the detrimental effects of racism and its history in our country. I also have two sisters currently in the Chapua School System, and I know for a fact that the video circulating is part of a bigger problem and it's not an isolated incident. What I'm trying to say is, how dare you say that you don't condone this behavior when you're the ones who essentially advocated for this type of language when you approved the play where a bunch of predominantly white students sang the N-word less than five years ago? How dare you claim to care when kids who were caught jeweling in the bathroom got a longer suspension and had marks on their permanent record when kids who are blatantly racist were given a slap on the wrist? What kind of message does that send to the student body? Show black people and other people of color in our community that their lives matter. Please, please do better. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Ellen Schwebel. Ellen, we can see that you're trying to get on the screen. Perhaps you can check if you can get your audio and video working. Ellen. You know, we have three more speakers. We are happy to go and finish them up so everyone can speak, even if it obviously goes a little past our 10:30 cutoff. So Ellen, I will ask you to try and get back on if at all possible. At the end, we will call your name again. If your hand is up, we'd like to hear from you if possible. And next is Amy Barone.
Hello?
Hi, Amy. We can hear you, but we can't see you yet. Is it possible to turn on your video? Ah, now we can see you. Thank you so much. So state your name and go ahead.
Amy Barone. I lived in Chappaqua 21 years. Both of my daughters are graduates. Ariana is here, hopefully going to join me in a minute to say something. I just wanted, this has been wonderful, seeing all of you tonight and hearing you and, you know, creating this community that we kind of was wondering who we were, you know, losing faith in ourselves. This has been very heartfelt, and I think we are on to something wonderful here. I'd also like to just mention a young woman who's being suspended starting fall of 2020 for standing up for racism. She posted a TikTok, and I believe she did not, I didn't see the TikTok. She did not mention names. She merely said, "I don't like my town because it's full of white boys that use the N-word." And now she is suspended the first two or three days of senior year. And I just would like to, obviously, it's personal, it's confidential, why a student is suspended? But it sounds like her suspension is the same as people who've been, you know, caught using the N-word. And I'm just, it doesn't balance. I don't understand it. And I just, it hasn't been brought up tonight. And I normally try to keep, you know, keep it down the low, but I feel compelled to just stand up for this girl who I only know through, you know, like third generation, you know, like she's a friend of a friend. So anyways, here's my daughter Ariana, who graduated in 2017.
Hello. I'm not going to say too much. Pretty much everything I've been thinking has been covered. I just really wanted to call attention to the historical context of our town, which I feel like isn't really discussed in academic setting, at least throughout my experience at the district. And I just think we need to recognize publicly that just the centrality of whiteness in Chappaqua and how Chappaqua is a result of segregation and racist urban planning for generations, and our white families have been benefiting off of it for generations, and we are still failing to do anything about it. That's a big deal.
So thank you for giving us the time to speak. And again, I just would hope that anyone who has the courage to call out any racism that they witness, we've certainly heard many stories tonight of students of, you know, color, black, you know, whatever race feeling discriminated against. And students also spoke tonight saying, "I feel bad. I never said anything. I didn't speak up for a friend." I know what that feels like, you know? It's scary to make waves and not just play nice. But I feel like if any student does speak up and does post something, I hope they're not suspended for that reason, especially her first two, three days of her senior year, which is so exciting, especially after the pandemic, you know, after being not allowed to go to school. So I just hope the board reevaluates that situation. I don't know the details, but I just hope it is properly handled.
Thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you.
Thanks so much tonight. Next up is Vanessa Williams.
Am I on?
You're on. We can see you, we can hear you, so go ahead.
Hello, everyone. A little history lesson. Our family moved into town Newcastle in 1964. Both my parents were music educators. And of course, when we first moved in, there was rumors going around that they couldn't afford the mortgage. My first time that I was called a nigger was in third grade on the bus home from West Orchard School by brother and sister with the last name of Jeffries. And I didn't know what that word was, and I went home and asked my mom. And she said, "It's because of the color of your skin, and you're going to have to do better than everyone else just to be considered equal." And that's what every black child who goes to a predominantly white school has to do in order to be seen and to be considered equal. I've heard a lot about diversity. And when I was at Greeley, which was 1977 to 1981, I'm a class of 81, I saw lots of faces that were diverse. Professor Nuwazi was from Haiti, and he taught English. Dr. Lee was a black man, and he was a scientist, and he taught science and biology. Dr. Yegad was a rabbi, and he taught English. Mrs. Lee was Asian, and she taught computer science. Dr. Galas was from Spain. She taught Spanish. Mrs. Garcia was another Spanish teacher. And we had an amazing principal named Ed Hart, who was progressive, who was always available, and knew how to talk and deal with any situation going on. We luckily had a group of girls that were all African-American, and we used to sit together at a table in the cafeteria together. And of course, it was called the Black Table. And we knew that that was what it was referred to. And we didn't date anybody in Greeley because the white guys did not ask us out. And the white guys that were friends of ours were called nigger lovers because they hung out with us. This is 1977 to 1981. The faculty was so diverse, but also was strong and valiant. And the reason I was shown that not only was I a black person, but I was talented, was our acting coach or professor, named Mr. Phil Stewart, who, when I was in my junior year, gave me the lead as the mad woman of Cheyenne in Dear World, which was basically about an older white woman. But I was a sophomore at the time, and I was a black student. He didn't see color, he saw my talent. And from there, I got a chance to find my love of musical theater and end up on Broadway. This is all to say that it's a culmination of seeing people being seen and your parenting. My mother is the one who took me to see Nikki Giovanni and listened to her poetry. She gave me my Angela's book so I knew where I was from and had similar experiences to know where my roots were from.
Thank you, Vanessa. Can you finish up? Because I know your time is up, but we'd like you to finish up. Thank you so much.
We need diversity and real diversity for teachers. So students can see themselves in their faculty, but also be able to have a safe place to go to their faculty and discuss things. And we need somebody who's courageous, who will actually deal with the ugly truths that rise up. This is not the first time.
Thank you for your comments tonight. We have two more people tonight. I know that we had listed in our agenda that we would be ending at 10:30. We have two more people with their hands up. Mariam Sisi and David Stone. So those will be our last two people for this evening. So if we can move over, Mariam.
I think we need to ask anybody else if they want to speak because we do that every other meeting.
Yes, I was going to do that when the last person, after the last person's fuck.
Hi, can I go?
Yes, you can go right ahead.
Hello, I'm Mariam Sisi. I'm currently a freshman at Greeley, and this is my brother.
I'm Hamsa Sisi. I'm going to my senior year at Greeley.
So we just wanted to speak on some of the experiences we've had being black students in a predominantly white community. Since kindergarten, I've been experiencing racism. We've both been told, "Why does our skin look like dirt? Why does it look like poop?" And up until now, just before quarantine, I was given a note saying, "Consult student for niglet," which is a slur for a slave child. And just like, for so long, I've suffered because I was black. It's not something I chose. And I asked my mom, "What did I do wrong? Like, why do I have to experience this?" And she said, "You are black. In a white community in America that benefits white people and lowers black people, you are going to have to be better than everyone else. You're going to have to be different." Which is, which, and I've always been, and I've always known that, and I've always known I could never get in trouble. I could never misbehave because I would be the loud black girl. I would be the black girl who starts trouble because that's who I am. I've been labeled, I've been called things. And the main problem with this community is that not only do the parents not, they don't teach their children about diversity, about race, because they simply feel like they do not have to. The administration, I don't know how many times I've been, I've honestly given up because I've gone so many times saying, "This happened to me." And they simply told me, "You don't have proof. We can't, we can't, we can't discipline this student." When a friend told me that I looked like the dirt on the bottom of her shoe in sixth grade, the assistant principal told me that there's simply nothing he could do because the other friend didn't hear it. It's happened multiple times. Just freshman year, I've tried to start calmly, be quiet, be silent, not be seen because I'm black. And people on the bus say, "I dare you to say the N-word to Hamza and Mariam because they're black." And it's just been, we need to, we need to not teach history in like the terms of a white savior complex. People need to learn about how black people have suffered in slavery because a lot of these kids, they don't understand because they're white, and it's not their fault. It's not their fault because kids, racism is taught. It's taught by parents, by children, by adults. And it's, and we need to learn about not only how black people have suffered, but how black people have contributed to this, to this country, to this society, to everything they've done. And we need to, we need to also learn about Asian-Americans. I've only learned about Asian-Americans once, and that was in seventh grade. We need to, we need, we need more diversity staff. I've never had, I've only had white T-shirts my whole life. I think I've had one Hispanic teacher, and that's it, and she was a gym teacher. We need more diversity. We need to learn more. And do you have anything you need to say?
I think that it's very easy to feel invisible in this school, and especially if you're a person of color. And me personally, entering my senior year, leaving, to see that video, I was honestly disgusted by the way it was handled. At this point, I think I've been through so much. I've been depressed, you know, sad. But I've honestly realized that the reason these kids, these kids are very, very privileged. Like, and maybe they don't really like understand that, like, but I really think that even after I leave, I don't want this subject to disappear. I feel like right now, in the world, this is just a trend. People are dying and stuff like that. But no matter how many tweets or little Instagram black squares I see, I won't see that as people taking this seriously. This is a trend. So I think people need to actually sit down and think about what they are doing because black lives do matter. We're just like you. We bleed the same. We do everything the same. And people need to realize that. Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your thoughts. Next is David Stone, and I did see we had one more person. Aiden Curtis, raise a hand. Last opportunity, if anyone else, and then we will cut it off. Thank you so much. Next up is David Stone.
Hold on, I'll be writing.
We can see you and we can hear you. Yes, you can state your name and go ahead.
My name is David Stone. I attended the Chappaqua schools from kindergarten in 1997, left Greeley in the middle of my sophomore year in 2007. And I, although I have not lived in Chappaqua in over a decade, I have very closely been following what has been going on. And I want to kind of expand on what the last speaker said. I'm remembering from my education in Chappaqua. We didn't really learn much about the African-American experience. We had cultural education assemblies on occasion, but history was never really taught as the big picture. And I think that the privilege of many in Chappaqua might have, I don't know how to put this, might have contributed to that. And I often notice, you know, when I, I had babysitters of color who were often, you know, looked down on. There was one time when a neighbor of ours accused her of abducting me, even though she was taking care of me. Chappaqua has never been a place where everybody is treated equal. And it was very disturbing to see this video that has resurfaced. It is a shame that it took a time of civil unrest for it to resurface, for it to actually be paid closer attention by the administration, by the board. And what I plead is not only to take action against students who say things or do things that are hurtful to others, but the district should really make a pointed effort to teach these, teach other types of experiences in the curriculum, particularly in the social studies curriculum, and to make sure that students who are growing up these days have a greater worldview and, you know, and learn how to put themselves in other people's shoes. And I've tried my entire life to be a great ally to those who are marginalized and who are undeservedly marginalized. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, David. Okay, we made a last call, and so even though our meeting ends at 10:30, I would ask our technical support, no more hands up at this point. That did allow four more people in, Aiden Curtis, Ariella, Krishna, and Corinne. And those are the last four hands. We do want to hear you. And then we will end public comments. So Aiden Curtis, please.
Hi.
Hi, Aiden. We can hear you, so go ahead.
I'm Aiden Curtis. I'm currently a junior at a Horace Gray High School. The main problem I've had as a black student in Chappaqua Central School District is that, yes, Chappaqua has tried to discuss past racial issues and tensions in its curriculum regarding the United States. It has failed, it has clearly failed to address modern-day issues. And I think at this point, I would call it like an avoidance of discussing those issues because over the last decade, I would say, there's been a lot of high-profile police brutality incidents and oppression versus black Americans. When Trayvon Martin was killed, there was no discussion from any administration. There was no support that the administration provided. Same thing happened when Eric Garner was killed, and the same thing has happened now with George Floyd. And I have a problem with the administration's neglect for discussing these issues because the administration always tries to flame it, frame it as they're not engaged in political issues. And frankly, these are not political. Racism is not political. And I think it's important that you and the administration understands that. So thank you.
Thanks so much, Aiden. Ariella?
Can you hear me?
Yes, but we can't, and now we can see you. So go ahead, if you could state your name and go forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ariella. I graduated in 2006. Just wanted to make two quick points. One, we're talking about something that I think we can all agree isn't fair. So I think it would be fair to say that you can let people of color and black people speaking not be cut off on these calls. And I don't think there needs to be, everyone gets three minutes. I think it's more important for them to be speaking and us to be hearing them. I think it's more important for them to be speaking and us to be hearing them right now. And secondly, I just want to point out that when I was in elementary school, there was a teacher who made a comment implying that Jewish kids didn't sing as well as Christian kids. And you could barely finish a sentence. They were fired so quickly. And it is not easy to fire a teacher in a Chapua school district. So why, when there's an overtly hateful racist comment, is it then swept under the rug? When in other scenarios, that's an example of how it's responded to. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you so much. Krishna? Ramaswami? Yes.
Hello.
Hi Krishna. State your name and go ahead. Thank you. We can see and hear you.
Okay, my name is Krishna Ramaswami and I'm a senior at Greeley. So I know I'm one of the last people to speak here, so I just have one main talking point. And that's basically that this isn't just a problem with our students and it's a problem with our administration and it's a problem with our teachers. So I really hope that the teachers and administration watching this listens to this, but not only listens and truly, they need to truly reflect on what's been said. We need to stop acting like it's just a problem with the students. Actually, this year, there was an instance where people wrote the N-word on bathroom stalls. And we had a meeting because of this. And our principal stood in front of our school giving a speech saying that when he was growing up, he once heard a friend say the N-word and he froze and did nothing. And he said that he knows it's hard standing up to these kinds of things, but it must be done. And I know while this might not be, while this might not be intentional, it is ridiculous that our principal is dealing with this by saying that he was too scared to stand up when someone said the N-word. Like, are people of color supposed to hear that speech and feel safe and feel welcomed? Of course not. We need to stop acting like being a bystander is normal and saying that standing up to racists is a difficult task. It should and is an easy task. It should be an easy task. Yeah, that's all I have to say. Bye, guys.
All right. Is there anything else you'd like to say, Krishna?
No, I'm good. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Corinne Mesker?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you and see you. Go right ahead.
Thank you. My name is Corinne. I am an alumni of the class of 2006. I have been in the Chapua School District since kindergarten, straight through where I graduated. My brother went through the district and my parents still live in Newcastle. You know, everything that I've been seeing and hearing tonight and through a lot of social media that has been generated around all of this, I just have to say that I truly think that one issue that we still have in Newcastle that doesn't look like it's going away anytime soon is that as long as we are fostering Ivy League students who come out exceptionally poised and educated, Greeley administration thinks that they're doing their job. And unfortunately, that is just not the case anymore. It never has been. It shouldn't have been. Greeley in the Chapua School District has resources that allow students to become incredibly talented and move on to wonderful things. But the bottom line is we are not addressing human rights issues. And if we cannot stand up against a human rights issue, why does it matter if a majority of our students go on to Ivy League schools and become CEOs and lawyers and doctors? This is not a political statement. This is not trying to take a road of neutrality. This is not protecting the students of the district or youth. The bottom line is we need to stop being scared of the wealthy parents that are going to threaten and strong arm our administration of this community and of this school district. And we need to make a very harsh statement that human rights and social justice is not tolerated in this community. What is the point of having these very smart, educated individuals going out into the world if they are not going to learn consequence? If they are not going to understand what the word accountability actually means? And if they are going to believe that microaggressions are appropriate and tolerable? I believe deeply that the Chapua School District can be amazing and we can be better than that, but you have to not be scared to do it. And unfortunately, the primary people who are able to do that are not us. It is not the alumni anymore. It is not the current students. It is all of you. I recognize that that's an exceptionally hard and scary task, but you all have more power than a lot of us have right now. And so I am just praying deeply that you stand up for every single person who spoke tonight, every student that is in your school district right now, every student that will walk through those walls that has been made to feel less than because of the way that they look, the culture, the religion that they practice, all of it. We can be progressive, amazing, world-changing people and Greeley promotes that, but we're not doing a good job today. And so I really implore you.
Thank you, Corinne. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
And everyone, that concludes our public comment period for tonight. I want to thank everyone who was courageous enough to tell their own stories and to make sure that we listen to them. And as is our normal procedure, the board is, or has the ability, if we wish, to discuss anything that was stated in comments. I wanted to give people an opportunity on the board and the administration, if there is anything they would like to say at the close of the public comment period.
I'd like to just say one thing very briefly, which is that I, I'm deeply sorry if I inadvertently hurt anybody by the language that I used. I assure you that it was not intentional. And one thing that's very obvious through this beginning of conversation tonight is that there's a lot of learning and growing that needs to happen. And I include myself in that very consciously. And I sincerely apologize for anybody who I might have hurt and it was completely inadvertent.
Thanks, Hillary. Does anyone else want to say anything?
Hey, I just have one quick comment. I mean, I took a lot of notes, but I think the most important one that I took is that we need to just keep talking about this, that this is not a easy, short conversation change. And this is something we need to keep coming back to with a good degree of frequency. And I'll digest the rest of my notes later.
I was going to share that our students deserve better. I have no excuse for what's happened in our schools and I take full responsibility for it as the superintendent. I'm sorry. I know we can do better. Our students deserve better than this. And I need to take action and I will. And I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight, especially our current students for sharing your experience with us. It's very powerful. Thank you.
It's very powerful and we thank you for saying that. And we will support you and any change that we can make in this district as a result of everything that we've heard tonight because it absolutely has to be done.
I'd like to also just add that there's a lot more to be said, that this was a very, I understand this was a very unsatisfying format to do this with. We aren't able to get together because of the restrictions of the pandemic, but I would like many more forums and I want to hear more from our students of color. I want to know, I want to understand their experiences. I want to get more information on what they've been through. You know, I myself have had my own experiences and I, I think we're all still learning. What I gathered from what I'm hearing today is that things are a lot worse. I mean, I knew things were bad, but just hearing from these students really brought that into stark, stark relief. My heart is broken, but I just also want to say, I want to pick up on what someone said that they were really glad that this was happening. I mean, that sounds terrible, but I feel for the first time that we've come together as a real community. I feel that. And I didn't take notes. Holly, I'm glad you took notes, but I was just listening. And having come from the background that I come from, you know, I'm an immigrant to this country. My family's from Haiti. I've been insulted at the highest levels of government here. And my heart is broken that I feel a personal responsibility that I somehow didn't hear from every single one of these students personally. So I can't find the words to really adequately express how horrible this is, but what a tremendous opportunity this is for us and we better not blow it. We've got a lot of work to do and we've got a lot of listening to do. And this is to be continued. Obviously, this is just, just touching the tip of the iceberg, I feel. So I just want to, I'm sorry, I'm just taking time to get my thoughts together, but I just want to make a commitment that this is just the beginning and that we're going to continue these conversations. And I think I'll stop there for today.
I absolutely agree, Vicki. I know that several people mentioned, there's a lot more to be said than can be said in three minutes and we realize that. And we did want to hear as many voices tonight as possible, but this is very much the beginning. These conversations will continue. They must continue. I know everyone here at this meeting has made a commitment to make sure that they continue. We need to do right by everyone who spoke tonight. Is there anyone else who would like to say anything?
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Warren.
When I started, I said, you know, I think we need to have frank discussions about race. I think we started that tonight. I said, I think we can do better and working together as a community, we will. So that's what we have to do. So thank you for all the people who are brave enough to come on the call tonight and talk about their experiences with us.
I thank all of you. And to close out our meeting tonight, I just wanted to note that future meetings after this, Tuesday, June 9th, which was originally scheduled as our annual budget vote and election. I know that you got messages today that there has been a voting extension by mail through the 16th of June. And our budget vote and board elections will be counted that evening. And our meeting after that is on Tuesday, June 23rd at 7:30 PM. Can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at 10:55 PM? I'll move to adjourn. Can I have a second? Oops, I can't see. Sorry, you were blocked. Hillary, all in favor? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much and good night.
Thank you to everyone. Good night.